I'm sorry, the light's turned off.
Hello?
Oh, there's back on.
Good evening. I'm calling the meeting to order. And the reconvene statement is as follows. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of August 18th, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey, 07470. The statement of compliance setting forth date and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Okay. We're going to stand for the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll move to reconvene, Madam President.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Fatale. Okay. This evening, we're going to have two presentations. The first one will be on the district goals. And we start out with those before the start of every school year. The second presentation is going to be on the new health and PE standards that are going to be part of lessons that Mrs. Reichman is going to present. You are welcome to make comments during the meeting. There is a portion where you can speak to agenda items. And then at the very end of the meeting, there's a portion which is an open session where you can address any item. I am prefacing this just to let you know. Mrs. Reichman's presentation will go online. And there's also a portion called Let's Talk. So you will have an opportunity to make comments in Let's Talk. They will all be compiled, and the board will not be voting on the new lessons plans until the September 8th meeting. So there's plenty of time for you to review them and let us know what you think. We are working under a new policy, which we worked under at the July meeting. For the portion where you can address agenda items, you have three minutes to speak. There is not a second turn. When it comes to the open session, you have five minutes to speak, and there's also not a second opportunity. So with that, we will proceed. I will turn the meeting over to Administration.
Okay, so the, before we get to the presentations, we have the administrative summary report.
Okay? Thank you.
So to start the report, I would like to take a moment to recognize Dora, Dorothy Thomas. For the past year and a half, Dorothy was a colleague, someone who worked as the accounts payable manager. And after suffering a brief illness, she passed away this past weekend. So we'd like to take a moment to recognize her. Okay, so for my administrative summary report, I'm just going to go through a few things quickly, and we'll get to our presentations. So we're only a few weeks away from the start of the school year. We look forward to the return of our teachers on September 1st, and then for our students on September 6th. We're well-prepared for the start of the school year, and I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our 12-month employees who worked throughout the summer to make sure our schools are ready for another great school year. Unless you work in a school, you cannot imagine the incredible amount of work that is completed during the summer months. From ordering all the supplies and materials needed to start the school year at a time when many things are out of stock and not available, to making sure our floors are perfectly refinished, to identifying and hiring staff members at a time when there is a noticeable teacher shortage, there is no shortage of challenges this summer, but despite these challenges, we are in a good place. This week was a very important week leading up to the start of the school year, in addition to holding a successful administrative retreat that placed all of our administrators in a great place to start the school year. We also held our new employee orientation, which was attended by 83 of our new employees. So I'd like to thank Paula Clark and the HR Department, as well as our administrators, the Wayne Education Officers, Eda Ferrante and Donna Reaver, and our Board President, Sue Padup, for taking the time to join in welcoming all of these new employees. I'd also like to thank Paula Clark and the HR Department for planning such a great introduction to our school district. We have most of our positions filled. We still have some jobs that need to be filled, non-instructional though, which is great news for the district. We'll talk a little bit about our COVID response for the upcoming years. Some members of the community have been asking about that, so I'd like to talk about that for a few minutes. So we've reached out to ask about, or some people have reached out to ask about what the school year would be like as it pertains to our COVID response. So of course, things can change, but as it stands, some very important changes are a sign that the pandemic, while not over, is clearly moving into another phase of recovery. We have to learn to live with COVID and take precautions as needed as we would with any other illness. I think most would agree that based on these changes, we can expect a normal start for our school year. So social distancing, universal masking, cohorts, and school exclusion are in our past. Governor Murphy, Governor Murphy, sorry, recently lifted Executive Order 253, which required unvaccinated staff members to be tested weekly. With that changing, we'll no longer be hosting a COVID testing location in district or requiring staff members to be tested. We continue this year where we were last year, in that we have no universal masking requirements. The only time masks may be required is in limited situations where students are in a nursing office and are actually showing signs of communicable disease, COVID or otherwise, and also upon returning to school after being ill with COVID. Otherwise, parents are advised to keep their children home when sick and have their children wear masks for 10 days from the date of last exposure to a positive case of COVID-19, or after returning to school on days six to 10. However, the district will no longer be, excuse me, however, the district will no longer be policing compliance. After conferring with the Wayne Health Department, the district will not be conducting contact tracing investigations. However, we are still required to record and report positive cases to the township and to the state. If there are outbreaks, we would need to work with our local health department to determine an appropriate response. Okay, so I'd like to also talk about the revised health and PE standards. So you know, many of you are here this evening because of that, so we appreciate the work of our teachers and other staff in developing these lessons, which we believe achieve a balance between the requirements of the revised health and physical education standards and the concerns expressed by some members of the community. We released the presentation that you're about to see in advance of the meeting to be as transparent as possible, and we hope that releasing these lessons will help concerned citizens understand what is actually being proposed here in Wayne, as opposed to getting information from other sources which may not be accurate. It's important to note that the Board of Education, as Mrs. Padup said, is treating the proposed lessons as public work session items this evening. That means no final decisions are being made. Instead, we are in the feedback phase. We want to hear more from the community before any formal action is taken, and we are using Let's Talk to receive that feedback. We also recognize that many people are on vacation, so the feedback period will extend all the way through September 7th, and then the Board of Education will be meeting on September 8th, where feedback and any changes will be discussed and formal action is planned. As we previously shared, none of the proposed lessons, based on the revised health and physical education standards, will be delivered to students until later in the fall. Once the lessons are finalized, parents will be provided with additional time for review, along with an option to opt out. Just a quick update from the business office. Business office is finalizing the fiscal year, prior fiscal year, and anticipates that auditors will begin their onsite visits in early October. The purchasing area has been very busy processing requisitions for school supplies for the entire district and reports only minor supply chain issues with some instructional supplies. The district's move to a new employee health benefits program went well with no major issues. We're planning for a new open enrollment cycle in the fall, and we'll align the district with the state's calendar year starting January 1st, 2023. Quick facilities update, the facilities department has worked hard during the summer to prepare for opening and is finishing up with stripping and waxing school floors throughout the district. New curbing and paving running the length of Pines Lake entry nearing completion. Planned drainage improvements for Pacenac will begin in a few days. The Wayne Hills High School junior varsity baseball field upgrades are almost complete and will now have a proper infield. And drainage improvements for the Wayne Valley High School junior varsity softball field at Wayne Valley are next. The security camera project is moving forward with work at Lafayette, Ryerson, and Fallon. Supply chain issues may cause a few weeks' delay as electronic equipment has been difficult to secure. During the next two weeks, security vestibules will be installed at JFK, Anthony Wayne, and Wayne Valley. The district's vestibule project was slowed due to manufacturing delays. The roof replacement at Ryerson is going ahead of schedule and is over 80% complete with only curbing and flashing work remaining. As far as the HIB report goes, there are no HIB cases to report during this period. Okay? So that's my admin summary report. We can get to the goal presentation. I think so. Are everybody good? Okay. So it's always very exciting to talk to the community about our district goals. So I mentioned in prior presentations that our district does not have a five-year plan, a seven-year plan, anything like that. We do, we do that for the facilities, but in terms of our academic goals, we establish annual goals. So these are all goals that will improve the school district. These are all goals that will move our academic programs forward, and they really focus on students and student achievement, teaching and learning, things like that, that will, like I said, enhance the school district. So the one goal that we talked about previously that you will not see here, that can come back, is the goal about a referendum. Okay, so there was previously a goal we talked about with the referendum. It's not to say that the district is not moving ahead with the referendum, but we received information about the timing of the referendum, and as you'll see, all these goals are, they have a timeline that goes with them. So we have to do some more work, but that goal will come back, probably at our next meeting, but for now, the referendum goal is something you will not see. Okay? So let's go ahead. Okay? Well, it was working. Where's it? Okay. Okay? Okay. So our goals are presented in no particular order. So just because something is goal one doesn't mean like we assign any weight to what would be the most important goal, because we recognize that different goals are important for different people. There's no way to make a determination about that, but this particular goal has to do with enhancing, expanding, and refining our special education programs. Okay? So the reality is that for a variety of reasons, including the pandemic, more and more students are being found eligible for special education and related services, particularly at the elementary level. So compounding this is incoming students who are moving in and also the extensive nature of the needs that are out there. So this particular goal involves the district doing a comprehensive needs assessment and hiring an outside organization with expertise to come in and evaluate a number of things that we need to look at in the district. Okay? So you can see there's a very specific plan for that. You can see board members that the financial implications in general are minimal, although if you see at the very end of it, there's a determination about additional staffing, right? Facility work, different things that may come out of this process that will be identified that may be moderate. And when I say moderate, probably with an expense of $10,000 to $100,000 to significant, which are usually projects that we think will cost over $100,000. Okay? So that's basically goal one. Okay? Goal two. Okay, so basically, this goal is about supporting our students who are working their way towards their post-secondary plans, whether it's college or other types of educational experiences or moving out into work. So the bottom line is that, in particular, the college admissions process has changed dramatically for a variety of reasons. The rise of the Common App, the fact that so many students choose between 15 to 20 colleges in a lot of cases to apply to because they're not sure if they'll get in, the uncertainty created by the pandemic, the fact that there was a number of students who basically sat out college for a year to take a gap year till they decide to return to school so it would be more of a normal college experience. A variety of things have led to a lot of competition for college placement. And so the goal here is to put our students in the best possible position by taking action across the district that will help with college admissions. Okay? So here's the specifics of the plan. And the general idea is that we would form committees, including guidance counselors, principals, assistant principals, staff, parents, and board members. We did that already this spring to address an issue with the calculation of GPA, and so that's part of this goal that was already accomplished. But then there's some other things that we might need to do. One of the things that we also did in building up towards this goal was working with interviewing and talking to our guidance department to see what their needs were and what might be helpful for them. So they themselves identified, many of them are younger guidance counselors early in their career, many of them identified the need for a guidance supervisor. So that's also something we're going to evaluate and whether that fits in the budget. We're also looking to enhance our program of studies for both of our high schools to greater explain the benefits of different classes and to look at what we might be able to do better with our program of studies. And the other, the other part of it, which is in process, is evaluating student outcomes based on community internships. So in other words, college, or high school students looking for college placements benefit greatly if on their college application, they can show that they have an internship. So what was once something that happens where you're in college, go for an internship, is now something that's pushed down to the high school level. So if there's a particular major that you're interested in, or if there's something that you really want to learn about, an internship is a great way to do that. So we've been forming partnerships with a number of businesses in the community that will provide our students with really high-quality internship experiences. Okay? So goal three. Previously, parents have raised the issue about the extended day, and can extended-day programs be extended to the middle school level? That's been a topic in Wayne for many years. The other area where parents have requested extended day is at the Early Childhood Center. So the Pre-K and Early Childhood Center currently does not have an extended day. And so at this point, what we want to do is evaluate the model, see what kind of interest is out there for our parents, and then if it makes sense, it's warranted, we'd like to go ahead and establish some additional extended-day programs, either on our own or perhaps with other organizations that run extended-day programs. So that's that goal, and there's the specific plan for it. So you can see the survey, which was already completed. We know there's interest out there. And then we'll go ahead with what the, what the program would look like, because an elementary extended-day program is going to be different than a middle school extended-day program, right? So we want to make sure that we have a great extended-day program for our students and something that is affordable for our parents. Okay? So another goal we have for the upcoming year is to evaluate learning management systems to enhance the learning process. And probably should say teaching and learning process, but it's also very helpful for teachers to be able to take all the resources. A lot of our instruction is delivered using computer, and the ability to put all these resources together and to be able to also do things like take attendance and evaluate test scores and things like that, have a grade book all in one platform, is an enormous help. A learning management system offers a lot of advantages, and so the whole idea is that we will look at these different learning management systems and identify one that works best for the district, or keep what we have, which is Google Classroom, although it's not really a learning management system. Our staff members are very accustomed to using that along with other programs, but it's not fully integrated. Okay, so there's our process. Again, this presentation will be available online. Goal five has to do with the pandemic recovery. And what this is, for any of you who are educators, the multi-tiered system of supports is not something that is new in education. It's something that's been out there and something that we have here in Wayne that we've been starting to work on. Last year, we provided professional development and got our start. This year, we really want to make sure that we're in a great position to deliver services because we know that many of our students, after evaluating test scores and after looking at a variety of different subgroups and their performance on the new student learning assessments, we know that they are not where they were in prior years. So the administration got a start with this at our retreat, where we basically evaluated test scores and looked where our students are. And we know that we're going to need to target services for our students and provide everything that we possibly can to get them back to where they need to be. And at this point, this is the best way to get there. So there's our plan. And as you can see, most of the plan has no cost or a minimal cost, and a good part of it can be grant-funded. So I think that the actual impact on our budget is probably almost nonexistent. Right? And that's the report. So thank you very much, board members. Do you have any questions, anything you'd like to talk about regarding the goals? Next board meeting, I'll have the referendum goal back, but we have to talk a little bit more about that timeline. Okay? And that's it. Okay, you're good. All right, now Mrs. Reichman.
Good evening, everyone. As Ms. Padup and Dr. Toback indicated earlier, I'm here to share some information about the new health and PE standards, physical education, and the instructional lessons that were crafted by our curriculum teams this summer. We do have a requirement to meet these standards, and it was really important that we involved our teachers, our counselors, and our PE teachers, health teachers, and our school nurses. Just wanted to make sure I didn't leave anybody out. I also think it's important for me to just emphasize that we have been listening to all the comments and information that you've been sharing. A lot of familiar faces here, and this is an important topic to so many of you. We have Let's Talk available. It's health and PE is listed as a trending topic, and several people have written in. It's really helpful to us to gather this information that way because we can produce an analytics report, and then you'll be able to see how the community feels, the information specifically that was communicated to us, and this could be reported back out to you. When we receive individual emails, it's hard for us to share because we want to respect people's privacy. This is a nice way for people to give impact, input and feedback, and then for us to be reflective and really consider what is most important to the community overall. Dr. Toback shared earlier also that no action will be taken tonight. My goal tonight is to walk you through the presentation so that you can then go home. And I also know that many people cannot be here tonight, but I want you to have an opportunity to open up the lessons, look at the information carefully. There are a lot of video stories that were embedded. This would take time. And then communicate and share your feedback with us. We will sit down for the next two weeks, go through all the feedback, and we will be very transparent in reporting back what comes to us through Let's Talk so that you can see overall what the sentiment of the community is. And also important to note, I just wanted to remind everyone that there is an opt-out option available for students for any of these lessons. Let me get started. When we developed the lessons, we considered the age and the developmental appropriateness of all these lessons. We had elementary and middle school teachers working with us this summer. I mentioned who was involved, but that's just listed up here for you to see. These standards were revised in 2020, and we're responsible for implementation this fall. I know some people did write in and ask, you had two years. This is a sensitive topic. This was not something that we were going to do haphazardly. It was not something that we would do without community input. These are your children and many of our children, many of the teachers who participated in this summer work, our parents in our community. It was really nice to have their input and involvement. We were also promised resources from the state, and us, along with our neighboring districts around the state, were waiting to see what was presented to us. It did not meet us with satisfaction, and based on all the information that we were able to gather, we wanted to take a time to develop our own lessons, identifying resources that we thought really met the standard in a way that was reasonable and that people would be comfortable with, and then at their discretion can make determinations about opt-outs. Any of these lessons are either taught in one class and in some cases, two. Most of them are one class. I know some people asked about this. This is not clickable right here. It's just an indication that anything that's in red gives you access to the scripted lesson plan and is a direct link to the resources. So this one's not clickable, but when you move forward, this is grade one, and right here, this shows you there's two standards that are listed here. And if you click on Lesson, Families and Family Support, it will take you to two lessons for grade one, and these are the standards that they're trying to meet. Describe different kinds of families locally, nationally, and globally, and note similarities in the way in which they keep their children safe. Explain the ways in which parents may care for their offspring, animals, people, and fish. My plan tonight is not to open every lesson, there are videos embedded, but to show you how to access them, and then for you to take the next few weeks to go through them thoroughly, take a look at what is in there. And if you need me to demonstrate, then I'll go back and open something if that would be helpful. But I just, right now, want you to see overall, collectively, what we're rolling out. Grade two. Right here, you'll see there's four different lessons. The red indicates where you can click on the lesson. There's culture and expression. This really just, in an age-appropriate way, focuses on different cultures and how people may be different, and that we celebrate differences in culture and expression. Animal reproduction, when we talk about reproduction, animals are used, and it's a way for second graders to be able to identify. That feels very much appropriate for their age level. Body systems and anatomy. Grade four is, there's no changes from previous years. We have always provided a lesson on puberty. Parents had an option to opt out, and nothing has changed. This just is a topic that is sensitive with some people, and I wanted to include anything that may be questionable or people have concerns about, and anything that we're offering an opt-out option for. Grade five, in grade five, you'll see right here, there's four lessons. This was a template. I know there were questions, people wrote in about the last, it says health now, the last post-it. We used a template because it was an educationally friendly way to share out the information. This one has a lesson, creating a community in the classroom, I and me, health boundaries. There's one about reproduction and one about pregnancy. I would encourage I would encourage everybody who is interested to go through, look at the presentations that are in there, look at the resources, look at the activities. And if there's anything that makes anyone uncomfortable, that you have additional questions, share your feedback. This is a work in progress. The last grade that is addressed is eighth grade. This was a presentation that had been used. The only revision to this instructional lesson is on slide 10. So that was the only change that was made. That concludes the lessons overall. So as you can see, there's only a handful of lessons, and there's a QR code, or you can go right onto the website, go to Let's Talk. It'll take you to the page, it'll take you to the trending topic, and that's where you can share your feedback. If you have questions, board members, I'm happy to respond. Again, it would be challenging tonight to open up every lesson, but we wanted to make sure by releasing the presentation yesterday that you had an opportunity to start looking at it. And if you wanted to share thoughts or concerns or ideas tonight and over the next few weeks, we'll just monitor and gather up your feedback, and then we can produce a report.
Ms. Pedup has a question.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Reichman, I heard Dr. Toback mention that you're going to go over the Let's Talk feedback, and then you'll come to a conclusion on the seventh. The board meeting is on the eighth. When will the board receive the feedback and plan for any changes? When will we know what the decision is? It seems like it's cutting it too close to keep the open feedback until the seventh. It should be cut off just a little sooner so that you can compile your decisions, present it to us, and then bring it to the board meeting.
We can take that.
It just seemed, the timeline seemed a little...
We wanted to allow as much time as possible.
No, I understand that.
Knowing it's the start of the school year, but we can certainly scale that back. Or what we could do is we could share information that comes to in stages.
Okay, however you want to handle it. Thank you.
Another question?
To piggyback on what Ms. Kazan said, because I do think it is important that we do get feedback from the public. Instead of, because the earliest would be eighth grade, the last week of health for them in the first marking period.
Correct.
And then grades, the elementary school grades would be the third trimester after Memorial Day, which was, we spoke about at a previous board vet meeting. I don't want to run out of time. Is there a way that we could then take action on this at the second September meeting instead of September 8th?
I think the thing to do is, yeah, we could. I think it's probably a decision to make down the road. We'll see what feedback we get. And then the board doesn't have to take action if on the eighth, the board says, listen, we'd like more time, then that's fine. You know, we could pull, if there's an agenda item, we can pull it. So let's see how things go, see what kind of feedback we get. And if the board would like more time, we'd be happy to. Obviously, it's really up to the board at that point. You could determine if you'd like to...
I just don't want us to rush through this.
Yeah, no.
It's...
No.
And, I'm sorry.
No.
With all the feedback, the ed committee will be meeting again, possibly?
We meet on the eighth.
On the eighth? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Prasakos?
Just curious, over the last 52 hours that this presentation was available, do you have any indication that you could give us of how many Let's Talk submissions have been related to this topic?
I received three.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I received one email and three Let's Talk.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. I'm not yet. Okay, that's okay. Moving right along, revisions to the agenda, please. Mr. Moffett.
We have several. I'll start reading them. It's the under N, Human Resources, and one, Approval of Resignations and Retirements. We're going to add number 24, Katie, and I'll spell the last name, V E N T R E L L A, which is an LDTC at Anthony Wayne Middle School, PC number 01-33-12-CRI, account number 11-00219-104-17-008, step nine, MA 30, at $75,770, resignation at October 15, 2022. Under N3, which is Approval of Leave Requests, we're adding number five, which is employee ID number 6866, math, S C M S, PC number 0131-19-AW, illness days 9/1/2022 through 9/30/2022, F M L A/NJFLA 10/3/2022 through 12/22/2022, unpaid with benefits. Next one is N5, Approval of Revised Items, again, under Human Resources, number 17 will be revising, employee ID number is 8884, revised start date of leave to 9/1/2022 using illness days. N6, Approval of Appointment of District Staff, will revise the following. Under number 16, Hannah, again, I'll spell the last name, B A L C E R, we're revising that from an LTR kindergarten RC to LTR grade three RC, full year, 9/1/2022 through June 30/2023 with family benefits. Salary remains the same. We'll be adding number 54, Amanda, last name is S E R E K, long-term replacement kindergarten, TD, step one, BA at a salary of $54,330 prorated, and that will then read September 1, 2022 through November 23, 2022. PC number 01-02-49-AFL, account number 11-110-100-101-06-000 with individual benefits, replacing ID number 5508, which is at $65,070, step eight, MA on the WA Salary Guide. We will be also adding number 55, Chloe, last name is N O R E L L, music RC/RY, step five, BA, salary of $57,470 with benefits, PC number 01-01-21-ASH at a .6, and account That's, next is the next PC number, is PC number 01-10-21-EX at .4, account number 11 triple, I'm sorry, 11-120-100-100-10, replacing Hannah, spelling her last name, S V E N D S E N at a salary of $56,120, step four, BA of the WEA Salary Guide. Adding also 56, first name is spelled S H R U T H I, last name is spelled K R I S H N A M U R T H Y, LTR Math, S C M S, step one, BA, salary of $54,330 prorated with individual benefits. That's from 9/1/2022 through 12/23/2022. PC number is 03-31-19-AW, account number 11-130-100-101-13-0, pending certification, replacing employee ID number 6866 at a salary of $78,370, step 10, MA 30 of the WEA Salary Guide. Again, under Human Resources, N15, Increase in Assignment. Excuse me? Okay, back to Human Resources on item number N15, Increase in Assignment. We'll be adding a number seven, which is David Drozjok, who's D R O Z J O C K, Assistant Principal Athletics, full-time equivalent of one, Wayne Valley High School, PC number 02-41-42-D T U, account number 11-000-221-104-15-0, to direct, I'm sorry, to District Assistant Principal in Charge of Athletics, and that'll be $11,000 for each of the three seasons. Moving on to executive session items that come out under Legal. We have R1, which is going to read WTAA Sidebar Agreement. The recommended action is as follows. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approves the sidebar agreement dated August 16, 2022 between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Township Administrators Association to revise Article 7, Section A, to add Paragraph 5, District Assistant Principal in Charge of Athletics as discussed in executive session and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. We'll be adding number two, again, R2, WEA Sidebar Agreement, and that reads as follows. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approves a sidebar agreement dated August 9, 2022 between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Education Association with respect to revision of Schedule C1, adding high school coordinator of athletics and student activities as discussed in executive session and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same. And lastly, we'll be adding number three, R3, under Approval of Hib Determination, that action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board affirm the Superintendent's decision on HIB case number 149/2021/2022 following an appeal as required by NJSA 18A:37-15-B6-E. That concludes all the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are able to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Thank you. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Fatale?
Second.
Mrs. Kazan?
I'm here to talk a little about the Cross the Line activity in the fifth grade lesson plan.
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name?
Wilson Aloquin, Wayne.
Thank you.
And I did go over the new updated plan, so I'm going to talk about the fifth grade lesson plan portion of it, the activity game. And now, I don't know if it was part of the old lesson or included in the updated one, to be honest with you, but what I do know is that it's pretty inappropriate, and I genuinely am curious if anyone can tell me the benefits that this activity, this game, you know, does for the kids. Because when I was reading it, it actually kind of felt more like a therapy session than a fifth grade assignment. And, look, I get it. You want kids to be accepting and have compassion for everyone in every circumstance. So do I. But this is not the way, not even close. And I'm saying this as one of the kids who this type of activity would have affected when I was 10 years old. You see, I was a kid whose family didn't have a lot of money. I was a kid who was raised by a single mother, and I was a kid who was picked on, you know, due to a speech impediment. And do you think that this stuff that was on there, those questions, to step forward and move back, is something I would have wanted to do in front of a whole classroom full of kids? Definitely not, I'll tell you that. So something that I saw on there is, why does everyone in the class need to know if a child's parents are divorced, separated, or never married? Why do they need to know who raised, who was raised by a single parent? Why do they need to know who has a family member with an invisible disability? Has anyone considered that a child whose parents could possibly be going through a divorce at that very moment when they're doing this lesson? What was I at? Sorry. You know, what about a parent who, a child was there and they had a parent that passed away, and they're sitting here, ask, move forward, move backwards? There's a few things. Are the child who knows the struggles of the family that they go through in dealing with a family member who has a disability. Reliving something like that, or that sensitive subject or a very private matter in front of a whole classroom is unacceptable, and to be honest with you, it's just no one's business. Throwing in innocent lines like you like fruity pebbles or you like mint chocolate chip ice cream does not hide the fact that many of these questions are inappropriate in a public classroom setting. Having a kid state that they are picked on last, or they are picked last for sports or games in front of anyone, that's kind of demoralizing. This activity, I don't know, it just stood out to me, and it could easily open the door for bullying, teasing, and also drive a child further in isolation. Has no one else noticed that the more we try to pry and dig into every aspect of this kid's lives in school, the worse the mental health crisis is getting? This isn't just an opinion, it's a fact. Look at the data. It's showing children are, we're in the middle of a mental health crisis, one that is just getting worse and worse every single year. And to be honest with you, when it comes to teaching acceptance, like I feel this was the point of, I think everyone kind of just needs to take a step back and get back to teaching the golden rule. Treat others as you want to be treated. Thank you.
Hi. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
We don't normally respond during public comment.
Yes.
But in this particular case, we thought perhaps some other parents had that same question. I know we've heard feedback about that particular activity.
Yes.
And so maybe it makes sense now for us to just address that, if that's okay with you.
That would be terrific. Thank you. Maria, could you just have a seat for a moment, please? Thank you. Dr. Toback? Mrs. Reichman?
Mr. Aloquin, thank you for sharing your input. I think when the, it was an activity, a suggested activity, and again, all of this was put together and with an opportunity for revisions and input and feedback. So it's very helpful to hear this information because you hear it from a different perspective. And I loved hearing what you had to say about how it would have impacted you. I think the perspective was that children could be, just listen and be able to see that there are differences, that people have different backgrounds, that they, you're showing respect for all different types and recognizing. But none of the activities, suggested activities that are there have to stay there. This is an opportunity to gather this information and hear these perspectives, and you shared some very insightful information about how it would have impacted you, and we will take all this back. So thank you. There was another comment, so we appreciate that.
I just wanted to add that that's an activity that we can easily remove from the lesson. The other part is that Cross the Line itself is a game that's played all the time, everywhere. It's played in corporate icebreakers, it's played in classrooms, and, but I do agree with you that the questions do matter. The other thing that, when a teacher uses a game such as Cross the Line, there's also ways that teachers now, they don't necessarily need to call or have a situation where a student feels that they've been called out. So many teachers use a game like this, but it's done anonymously. So many teachers use a game like this, but it's done anonymously. So it's easy to do that. We have software and staff members can use software to make sure that the responses from the students are done, are recorded anonymously to show the same information, but it's done anonymously, so there's no sharing.
Thank you for your patience.
No biggie. Hi, I'm Maria DeLuca, Wayne, New Jersey. First, I wanted to thank the administration, the members of the board, and the teachers who participated in the creation of Wayne's health education curriculum. It's clear that those involved not only listened to the concerns of the community, but were able to successfully incorporate the state requirements into the curriculum in a thoughtful way. Frankly, the outcome was largely what I expected, a health education curriculum written by education professionals containing age-appropriate lessons that meet the state of New Jersey requirements. So much of the conversation over the last year has been driven by parents' worst fears without any tangible information specific to our town. Now that we have the opportunity to review the long-awaited curriculum, I think most of the people have more of a comfort level with the material being presented. I know that everyone does not agree with every approach to public information and public education, but I do believe that all parents in our community want the best for their children. That being said, there is a proposed lesson, while well-meaning, could have some unintended negative consequences for students. The cross the line exercise, as written, has the potential to make some students feel uncomfortable or singled out and could potentially open the door to possible bullying. I believe the message behind the exercise is valuable and would suggest that the lesson be presented in an alternative way, through a video of the game, or through role-playing cards, or through some anonymous way, rather than having an actual student's real-life experience be part of the game itself. The discussion after the game is where the real value comes from and to play after all. Lastly, I wanted to thank those members of the Board of Education and the community who did not rush to judgment over a curriculum that had not yet been written. Your measured approach allowed for the creation of a compliant curriculum free from the threat of state penalties, which could have jeopardized much-needed funding for programs that benefit our children. I hope that the curriculum, I hope that the circumstance serves as a model for the future and that the Board of Ed and the community refrain from rushing to judgment based on hearsay or information from organizations and communities outside of Wayne. But this time is long overdue for our town to come together and work in a united way to benefit our children. After all, we can achieve much more as a united community.
My name is Roger Gunnels, twenty-two Lawy Ave. And that's, when you rock your thing, it's two N's and Gunnels, make sure you remember that. So I'm just going to address something real quick from behind us. This whole game of cross the line, the only thing that's crossed the line is the Wayne school system. It's none of the school's business about any of the questions that are being asked. It's none of your business, period. End of discussion, that's it. I want to go ahead and clarify that before we go any further. Don't be asking kids and interrogating kids on stuff at home. It's none of your business. As we can see from the previous presentations, parents have sadly transitioned from a fan of the school system to playing goalie against a school system hell-bent on destroying the American family. Opt out or not, school systems are contaminating the minds of children with material that is sexually inappropriate, lays blame on them for past practices of slavery, but fall woefully short of confessing that slavery impacted all people, not just one particular group. School systems are also promoting material that violates every possible biological and natural law. This material does, however, make those who have chosen to take a less natural path in life feel much better about their choices. It's all about feelings, isn't it? Just, no facts, just feelings. At the direction of this school system, children are being exposed to facts and lies. You can't teach facts in one class and lies in another. You just can't. But I guess we're going, I guess we're going to make an effort to. Next, when it comes, so there's this new thing called, Governor Murphy's got this new thing called a threat assessment team. I think this school system owes an explanation to everybody about what their intentions are at this threat assessment team. Because from the research I've done on it, it doesn't sound like a good idea. Having read about this threat assessment team, this is nothing more, this is nothing more than an effort to interrogate children regarding what goes on at home and spin it into a narrative that will be able to red-flag parents. If I find out that my children are being interrogated and pumped for information, every legal avenue will be taken to hold this school board accountable for their inappropriate actions.
My name is Christian C., sixteen, Claremont Terrace, here in beautiful Wayne, New Jersey. How much time do I have? I'm just kidding, I'm not going to take long. So I have a daughter who went through the school system here in Wayne. She's a sophomore in college. I have a son who's a senior in high school at Wayne Hills. And I have another son who's going into sixth grade at Scholar Colfax. We've finally graduated out of grammar school here in Wayne, which is pretty exciting. So I just want to make a few comments about the single AD solution that we're adopting. This isn't about the individual at all. I want that to be clear. I'm very excited for the individual it's going to be. And I think that leads me into my next comment, which is, you know, what happened if it doesn't work out for that individual? When we have two ADs at both schools, there could be one to cover for the other, God forbid something happens or someone decides to leave the district. Now, I just think we're putting ourselves at a little bit of risk if we're going to have just a single AD for the district. If that person decides to retire, or move on, or win the lottery, please don't let them play the lottery. It puts us in a predicament. And I, I understand, you know, each administrator plays an important part in the organization of the school system. You know, the AD one is just, they do a lot. They do a lot. And to, you know, I think there's some inherent challenges with taking one good AD and splitting him in half. And I understand there's supporting roles coming onboard, which is great, but it's not the same as having an AD in the building. There's a lot that needs to get done. I know everyone is very focused on the academic side. It's amazing what you learn from athletics as well, and how many kids are in, participate in athletic activities. One thing I think that would be great to understand, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but, you know, what's going to be the test to determine is this, has this been a successful venture? When do we, when do we take that test? When do we look and say, okay, you know what? This idea we have here, it's working, let's continue. Or you know what? Our children aren't better off than they were, maybe we do need to go back to a dual AD solution. And whether that's a, you know, a year from now, whatever it is, it would be great to understand what that, what that looks like. But I do appreciate everyone's time reviewing this, the administration's time and efforts in putting together a solution for the town of Wayne. We have a great school system here. We've got a great athletic programs. If you look at the Niche ratings, just Google it, I mean, both schools are highly rated. I just really hope it continues that way for selfish reasons, because I think sports are pretty damn awesome. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Cindy Simon, Rats Road. I actually want to speak to the district goals, one and two. First of all, I'm really glad to see goals involving the educational experience of our students with disabilities, as well as a goal to address post-secondary education. For the first goal, I agree with evaluating and improving our programs. I always agree with doing that for any programs. Having said that, this goal doesn't go far enough. If you ask me about my experiences as a student with a disability in Wayne school, my first reaction is to remember the taunting I went through and the way that some well-meaning adults made the situations worse and/or denied me opportunities or lowered expectations or that kind of stuff. I wish you could say my experiences are from the relics of history, especially since my son reminds me every day how old I am and short I am. However, I know from speaking to my children and speaking to other parents, my experiences still on occasion do occur to students with disabilities in the district. When it comes to students with disabilities, we need a goal that integrates them into the community in all ways possible. Educating with students with disabilities is not simply about programs for students with disabilities. It's about how children with disabilities who are in regular education classrooms are viewed by their classmates and teachers and other staff members. It's about how children perceive themselves and their fellow students who are in special education classes, use the resource room, get extra time on tests, or go out of class for speech, OT, or whatever else. It is about giving our regular education teachers, coaches, those who run extracurricular activities, the knowledge they need to provide the most positive experience possible for all of our children, including those with disabilities. As for the second goal on post-secondary life, the board is a solid start here. More time needs to be spent on the question of college affordability. Because time is short, I will only address one example here. Make sure we make staffing decisions that support helping our students improve their chances of getting into their chosen schools and earning scholarships. To this end, and to speak to what the gentleman just spoke to in terms of the athletic director situation, please have some kind of standard that we can use to measure whether this is working out for our student athletes.
Ryan Battershill, sixty-three, Camilo Drive. I'm a little disappointed that three of the board unable to be here, but I think that's indicative of the problem that we have of trying to get through important topics at this time of year, when there's a lot of vacations and a lot of things that people have to do outside of the board. I think it's one of the most important aspects that we've been talking about for two years to get to this point and then find out. I know there's going to be another meeting after this and maybe another meeting after that and so on. But I think it is important that we consider whether or not this short period of time that we're providing is enough time for all parents to be able to get in and get hold of that. With that, the fifty-two hours that the curriculum has been available online, some of that has been available without the link being on the board docs. They disappeared this morning for some reason. I saved the link. I think there's been, the tap into was probably the first time that I saw that something went out, other than people finding it because people were pinging the board to try and see if it was there. So rather than going through an organic process to get parents to find out this, I'd recommend that you use your email list and try and get it out there so that people can see. I think it's an important enough topic that we've talked about for long enough to be able to get that out. And with that, the Let's Talk app, I don't know how many other submissions. I've heard of many, many more submissions. I know that I personally have put two in, so I've got to believe there's more than one other parent that has put one in. So like, I've heard of people just in the time since you've said that, where they've said they've put three, four, five, six in. So either something's going missing in the Let's Talk app, or they're not getting through to you as well. So that's concerning. I also think it's concerning that the board doesn't get to see all of the submissions that come through. They get summarized, they get held up from the board being able to go through and see them. I don't think that helps the transparency to the board, to yourselves, to the parents of being able to go through and get that to happen. I understand there may be some things in there that you want to remove because they are sensitive, parents being very upset, that kind of stuff, like that would make sense. But I think the board are, being adults, are probably capable of doing that, even if you wouldn't want to share that, other than a summary back to the public. But I would like a little more transparency onto the things that are going into the Let's Talk app, because that doesn't seem to be necessarily marrying with the rest of the things. I was going to talk a lot about the cross the line thing. There was a lot of very concerning questions in there. I'm glad to see that you're going back to look over that and make a decision over where that's going to go and how that's going to be done. I think that's good use of the feedback that we've got. I would say, Dr. Toback, that if you're recording the information that comes back out of that, that would turn it into a survey. If it's a survey, there's a lot more laws and stuff that we need to go through to be able to ensure that you're not recording and keeping that information on the students, especially around such sensitive topics. So I would recommend that we don't go through and record it. Maybe a slip of the tongue that you were talking about at the time, but recording information is not a good thing for this. I'd be very upset with the fact that we started recording, whether or not people had, whether or not they were having issues with things and so on as well, without parents' consent.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Battershill, your time is up.
That's okay. I expected it.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Norman Robertson. I'm a Wayne resident. Just a couple of really quick points. From many years in government, I can tell you if you don't want, if you want to have the least response, or the least attendance at a meeting, or the least input from the general public, have the meeting in mid-August. Everybody knows that. I'm sure you, probably everybody here has said, well, I'll be on vacation on such and such. Three of the, of the nine of you aren't here. And that would have been an important thing for them to see. So August is a bad month. Mike Vatal is right, there he is. Mike Vatal is right when he says, don't rush into it. Really consider it. But make sure that you generate the public input that will allow you to consider it. I think it would only be fair, to this group especially, to let them know that the meeting number one on September eighth will be here and not in the conference room where it's scheduled. We had a problem with that last year. And people need to be able to ask questions. And if they have to go lesson plan through lesson plans, that's exactly what they should do. A lot of people thought some of that was going to be done tonight, but it wasn't. I mean, you have something called Let's Talk, but irony of irony is there's no talking involved. You know, there's no exchange of ideas. You have a group of folks who get up here for their three minutes, and that's about it. On something that a lot of people around this town and this country think is one of the most important issues facing the nation. What's going to happen to their first and second graders when they go to school? Wilson Aloquin was right when he was talking about the fifth grade lesson plan, as was the gentleman who talked about it. I'm just shocked to think that someone, some little, some child is going to be put on the spot about what's happening in their home. It's just wrong. It's just wrong. And I don't, I don't quite know how you do it, you know, anonymously. I mean, you don't put a bag over your head and take a step forward or take a step back. And I've heard of these programs before. And all it does is put somebody center stage in a group of young people who don't always have a reputation of being kind. We should be spending our time teaching kindness rather than providing ammunition for unkind people. And that's something that you really should consider very, very carefully. But let the, let the people ask the question when you have it on September eighth. Don't just give us another PowerPoint presentation, because when you get, when you get so many, you start thinking that PowerPoint means something different. We have the power. Get the point? And we don't want that. We want nothing more than to be able to fully trust the board, to fully trust the administration. We love every teacher there, but we do have concerns about cumbersome leadership. Thank you.
Sunil Dasoy, Black Oak Ridge Road. I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. I cannot believe that the governor is sending down a program that has pornography in it, has children being taught how to masturbate, has children being put on the spot about things that are taught in their house, or what goes on in their home. So I started looking for motivations, and of course, what's the first one? Politics. I M H O S E L C R T D E I are solutions for problems that don't exist. I've told you I'm an immigrant. My family was never kept from going anywhere, doing anything, achieving anything, or acquiring anything that Americans' families could. Not once. Not once. Is there pornography in that, in this program? Absolutely. I just thought they're going to be taught how to masturbate. I took this book out of the library, okay? I know that everything that's going on here is going to be filled with pornography, because this book, aside from the pornographic pictures in it, and it's written in cartoon form, has these instructions on how to commit suicide. Okay? From our library, here. Here he is rolling up his sleeve. Here he is, opening up a Vertical. Got it? Vertical. A vertical cut on his wrist. From our library, here. I took it out. Don't tell me there's no pornography. Don't tell me you're not going to be teaching sexualizing children while they're still too young to be sexualized. Don't be telling me when there's stuff like this in our library. You know what I haven't heard? I haven't heard until tonight, there's, yeah, power, you've got the power, get the point. First time I heard, how to increase math scores, English scores, language scores, music. I haven't heard any of that. All I've heard is, "Oh, these poor, woo-hoo-hoo, these poor immigrants, woo-hoo-hoo, these poor people of color, woo-hoo-hoo, these poor LGBTQ X, Y, Z." All right. What else are you doing with your life? Get out there, get an education, and get moving. We don't need to feel sorry for anybody. Nobody felt sorry for me. And I told you what my son does for a living. That's it.
Hello. Good evening to everybody. I'm Eileen Dangila, and I live on Valley Road here in Wayne. I have to say that I respect all of you here, the administration, the members of the board, the teachers, the school nurses, but I still would like to say what I want to say, okay? You are all in a very unique, very important, enviable or unenviable position to partner with the parents of this community to take care of their children's present in terms of education and their safety in school, to provide a good future for these children. And I don't think that the curriculum that we are trying, you are trying to push is the way to do it. I am a believer. I'm not ashamed of that, and I'm going to quote, thank you, I'm going to quote from the Bible. You may think that I'm a scripture, Bible scripture memorizing lunatic after tonight, but I will say this. Jeremiah 1, verse 1, chapter 1, verse 5 says, "Before I formed thee in the belly, I knew thee; and before thou comest forth out of the womb, I sanctified thee, and ordained thee a prophet for all the nations." Our children are not guinea pigs for a social experiment. Please, don't destroy the children. They are too young. All these, grade 2, grade 5, grade 8, please. I don't have kids. I have two four-legged fur babies, and yet I am very concerned at the direction the education system is going. I live in this community, so I have a stake here in this community. I respect you, like I said. God bless you, and know that I will be praying for all of you.
Hello, everybody. Mark Faber from Wayne. I know that in the past, we had questions about whether this curriculum was going to carry over into other aspects of the class. We had questions about whether or not this was going to carry over into other aspects of the teaching. That wasn't addressed. It said that there were going to be a few classes, but I want to talk to you about something that happened with my daughter this year. She's in sixth grade, going into seventh, and they read a book in her class called Unwind, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with the book, but it's, I guess, on the approved reading list. And basically, it's a book that says the second civil war in the United States was fought over abortion rights. And the compromise that they came to was that no children would be aborted at birth. However, the parents could send them to unwind camps as teenagers where their body parts would then be recycled and given to other children. So in that, they got a little bit, like maybe quarter of the way through the book, and the teacher finally said, "You know what? I don't think this is appropriate," when somebody asked, "What's abortion?" So sixth grade, it's not in the curriculum, and that's a question that came up in the classroom. Now, I don't blame the teacher because she hadn't read the book, and I actually respect the teacher tremendously, and she did stop reading the book. But you can see why I might be concerned that it's not supposed to be in the lesson plan potentially until eighth grade, but my daughter heard about it in school in sixth grade. So we'd like to know more about how you're going to keep this curriculum from creeping into other aspects of the teaching that goes on day to day, because I will be opting out of it, and I don't want my daughters to have to hear it in some other avenue. Next question I have is, how is it possible that we have all of the teachers that are working on building this curriculum, and it took parents to give you the perspective that that activity is questionable and something that is probably not appropriate for children? These are experts that are supposed to be teaching our children that have degrees in how to manage children and, you know, help do all this stuff, yet they failed to see the fact that that would possibly cause some unintended consequences. That's a concern for me, that maybe they're not taking parents' perspective into account, and they're trying to teach whatever, they're trying to meet requirements, but they're not seeing it through either the eyes of children or the eyes of their parents. And I think that that's something that really should be required of the people that are doing this, that they have to have a sense of understanding as to what can come out of the actions and the classes and the lessons that they're teaching. Because, you know, I mean, second grade teaching, you know, that boys have these parts and girls have these parts and animal sex, I mean, I didn't learn about those things until much later on. I don't understand why, because you know what's going to happen? All of a sudden, they're going to start, "Oh, let me see what you have." They're not going to know that there's something wrong with it. It's going to be their curiosity. "Oh, you have something different than me? Let me see." You're starting a path of, you know, things that are going to have major impacts on these children's mental state going down the line.
I'm sorry, Mr. Faber, your time is up.
Okay. I'll keep talking the next second. Thank you.
Anna Shanozhatsky, Raceroad. I have a question. I'm, whatever just a gentleman said a couple minutes ago with regards opening the curriculum. I really had a hard time, and I was trying from yesterday, click, 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 and I felt like, "Oh, my gosh, is something hidden here or what?" And I couldn't really open anything. Like, when I'm reading articles, everything is exposed. Here, I felt like everything is hidden, and I couldn't read and find what I wanted. So I was not able really find what people are telling me what is written there. So is there a way we can do different ways? So actually, I am supporting the fact to do the survey because it's easier. I'm a working mom, and it's, I'm trying on my break at work to look, to check, and I'm like, "I cannot open. I cannot open." Is there a way we can do a little different way or the survey? I think the survey would be nice and better because a lot of people, I feel, don't, are similar to me, that they cannot, don't have that much time to go and look and try opening a couple times. I don't know. Maybe I'm just not a technology person. I don't know. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Barbara Rigoloso.
Excuse me. Madam President, it's been a half hour. I'd like to extend the public portion to give other residents the opportunity to continue talking.
Do I have a second? Mr. Prasakos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Just a moment. Point of information, Mr. Moffett, is a roll call required? Okay. Excuse me, we have to-
That's okay. So I'd like to say hi to everyone. My name is Barbara Rigoloso.
I'm sorry. We have to take a vote.
Oh, my goodness. Come on already.
Mr. Moffett.
Right. So motion was to extend the 30-minute portion. Was there a time extension or was it, did you extend it for a amount of time?
No, I just want to give everybody an opportunity to talk.
Okay. And that was Mr. Prasakos' second, so I'll take roll. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi. My name is Barbara Rigoloso. I've been a resident of Wayne for about 36 years. I've raised seven children here, six sons and a daughter, and I have two grandchildren that live in Wayne as well. I think the success of my kids comes from the fact that the parents, the board, the teachers, the coaches, we all work together. We all work together. There was no division, there was no arguing, there was no craziness, fighting. This has to stop. This is not good for anybody. It's not good for the town, it's not good for new families moving in. They're concerned, the new families are concerned about sending their kids to the Wayne Public Schools because there's just too much, too much, too fast. I wanted to talk about the game, just like everyone else does. The game's got to go. The game is not for, it's not a game. First of all, divorce, single parents, disabilities, that's not a game to a child. No, that's not a game. It's shameful. School is supposed to be a place where you gather with your friends, you eat lunch, you talk about the kind of sandwich you have, you talk about what you did at football or chorus or band. That's what school is about. That's where you can be an individual. No one wants to stand up. Kids are embarrassed when they're from, when they have a disability. Kids are embarrassed when they come from a family that doesn't speak English. My parents were immigrants. You know, I always used to look over and see the American parents, you know, bringing ice cream to the class. Well, my mother was an immigrant who sewed in a factory nine hours a day, and I always used to say, "What would it be like to be a child of an American mom?" So what I want to say is, the game is not a game. The game is dangerous. It would be like me. I'm going to give you a visual, like I give my kids when I don't know what else to do with them. I'm going to give you a visual. So all you guys here, if you're married, step to the left. If you're happily married, step to the right. If you have a disability, two steps forward. If you're sexually active, two steps back. Does it not feel good? It's, I'm playing a game. It's not a corporate icebreaker because corporate icebreaker and playground is two different things. Everybody wants to be accepted. That game is not going to cause any acceptance. That game is dangerous. I promise. After what the kids have been through with the COVID, they're scared, they're confused, they want to come back to school, they want to be a class, they want to take their class picture, they want to have a field day and SDA and graduation and all the good things that come with the school experience. This stuff is not, I want to see the data from the state or from psychiatrists or psychologists or doctors that says, "Cross-the-line is a good game," because I think it's not. Just saying that.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, your-
Time's up. Got it. Thank you very much.
Pamela Masick. Nice to see another mom of seven here that have raised their kids, you know, with values and, you know, gearing them towards a life of success. I had a question. The superintendent talked about an outside organization that was going to come in to review our student needs. A lot of us became aware of Ms. Tamika Reese that came in last year, and we didn't know about it, and that's what cracked this whole thing open in a big way. We'd like to know ahead of time, who are, who is this organization or what is it? Who's on, who's involved? And we want to know. We keep hearing that parents are a part of these committees, parents are aware, all the people that I'm, hundreds on Facebook, social media, communicating with, everybody seems clueless. We don't know until after the fact. So we'd like to know ways that we can know prior to, who are you considering, especially some of the needs that were talked about between $10,000 and $100,000 for costs, you know, I'm trying to connect the dots and have a better understanding. So if there can be more transparency and more information given to us before you hire these, these groups. The same thing with committees, that was on the first goal. The second goal had to do with committees being formed, talking about parents are on this again and again. When there's been committees mentioned, I know parents that have wanted to be a part of these committees. How can that be? Can we know how to be a part of these committees that supposedly parents are a part of? Every parent that I know that has spoken with me hasn't, wasn't a part of it, hasn't been able to be a part of it. I understand that there's a concern with this curriculum, the health curriculum about losing points. I think it's CUSAC, but why not just offer the information at the end of the school year if you feel that it's a state requirement and you're afraid to lose those points? Why should parents have to opt out and their kids lose class time? Just have it at the end of the year like other schools are doing. There's a continuity left in this school year, kids aren't in and out of classes, and then they're talking about it, you know, on the playground or whatever, parents are saying. Save this at the end of the year if you feel there's a requirement, and then it's the end of the school year. If the kids don't go, they're on summer break. It's not going to interrupt the flow of academic instruction and healthy social interaction that should be taking place in the school. A lot of the information that you're introducing to these children, if it was discussed in a work environment, could be considered sexual harassment. So you are normalizing this type of conversation in an academic setting with minors, whether it's masturbation, anal sex, you know, they're not going to ask you questions, and then there's one of the lessons where you're going to instruct the children who are safe people. Well, just a few years ago, there was a counselor that was arrested from Wayne Valley for, you know, sexual misconduct with an underage student. What's a safe place? And isn't it the parent's place to decide who and what is safe? Again, these are intimate topics that are being normalized and would be inappropriate to discuss in a professional work environment. It just seems like it's common sense, and please consider these and my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tori Esposito, Woodlot Road. You know, I got here late, so I don't know if you addressed it yet. Can you please address the survey that was sent out by employee of your district, the head of it all here in Wayne? An email stating the district had no knowledge of this is not good enough. I'm registered to vote, and I didn't get an email. So where did all the email info come from? Is she here tonight? Does she only come when it fits her agenda? Is she going to come to send the email blast to all the teachers who show up on September 8th to stop the extremists who are attacking schools?
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is not an agenda topic.
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
Okay. See you later. I'm sorry.
Jennifer Lee in 48 Terrace Road. Two things that I wanted to address. First, in the beginning of the night, there was a discussion about how some of the COVID protocol had changed, which I was happy to hear. One of the things that I wanted to address, though, that I don't think was mentioned was about substitutes. I know that the substitutes for our districts were required to have COVID vaccination in order to work here, and I didn't know if that policy was going to change. I know people who are substitutes or potential substitutes who are affected by that, so just wanted to hear if there was any change on that. And then the other thing that I wanted to follow up on, I realize that it's probably not on the timeline yet because the staff hasn't yet come back from the summer, but I did want to follow up about the cross-curricular implications for the new health standards and if they are not going to be used in other areas, how will it be addressed with the staff? Are they being told that they can't access it, you know, through interdisciplinary strands? Just to make sure that the opt-out truly is an opt-out for those who are choosing that. Thank you. I'm registered to vote, and I didn't get an email. So where did all the email info come from? Is she here tonight? Does she only come when it fits her agenda? Is she gonna come to send the email blast to all the teachers who show up on September 8th to stop the extremists who are attacking schools?
Excuse me.
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is not an agenda topic.
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
Okay. See you later. I'm sorry.
Jennifer Lee, in forty-eight Terrace Road. Um, two things that I wanted to address. Um, first, uh, in the beginning of the night, there was a discussion about how some of the COVID protocol had changed, which I was happy to hear. Um, one of the things that I wanted to address, though, that I don't think was mentioned, was about, um, substitutes. I know that the substitutes for our districts were required to have COVID vaccination in order to work here, and I didn't know if that policy was going to change. I know people who are substitutes or potential substitutes who are affected by that, so, um, just wanted to hear if there was any change on that. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to follow up on, I realize that it's probably not, um, on the timeline yet because the staff hasn't yet come back from the summer. But I did wanna follow up about the, um, cross-curricular implications for the new health standards, and if they are not going to be used in other areas, how will it be addressed with the staff? Are they being told that they can't access it, you know, through interdisciplinary strands? Um, just to make sure that the opt-out truly is an opt-out for those who are choosing that. Thank you.[601.11][601.11](APPLAUSE)
Good evening. Val DiGisento. Um, a couple of things, I wanted to make another point about the, um, the curriculum starting later on in the year. I'd hoped that we would've heard a lot about these lesson plans, because I know they were already written, not in their finality, but certainly to the point where we're close to where we were now, that there would've been a couple of weeks of the community having those available to them so they could work out the kinks, get to all these jumps in, in the program, you know? I've reviewed a little bit of it, but there's a, a number of videos that you have to link to. You're not sure all the time that you wanna keep it in some contiguous manner. Um, so since that didn't happen, rather than rushing to the September 8th, or another time coming up, push it to the end of the, or further down, so that there's enough time to get all the feedback that you're looking for, give the opportunity to the community to really study and see what's coming in, so we can make sure that we're not gonna find some situations that are gonna put people in a position where they feel uncomfortable what's going on with their children. This is about children. That's what we're all here for, that's what you're all here for, that's what we trust our kids and grandkids to. Um, I think pushing it later is, is a great possibility to give that time, so that we don't have to rush to a September 8th, or, or maybe the week-after time period. The other thing is, I, I heard that Middletown has an, is looking at, or has passed, rather than an opt-out, an opt-in program. I reached out to the Board President, Frank Capone, I haven't heard back from him yet, to find out how they did it. But I understand that there might've been some legal concerns about whether we could opt out or not. But if somebody's able to do it, maybe there's a way that we could do that as well. I think opting in is a much better way to have a say in what your child is gonna be doing when you get a form back that says, "I'm gonna allow your child to opt in," rather than opt out. Opting out feels wrong. Whenever I opt out of something, it almost feels like I'm doing something I shouldn't be doing. Opting in sounds a lot more cohesive, I think, to a child as well. Those are my two points for right now.
Brittany Coyle, thirty-six Lawrence Road. Um, I just wanna address, again, of course, the standards, um, that have been presented to us tonight were rather not presented, um, in detail like we were all expecting. And, um, just to echo the sentiments of Mr. Battershill, first of all, first off, um, I think it would be an excellent idea for, as another woman spoke, because she's had such a hard time accessing the presentation and the links, if this, um, entire curriculum and every bit of the lesson plan was emailed to every single parent in the Wayne School System, maybe utilizing the same email list that was used for that survey last week by the WEA. Um, that would be really nice, so that every single person could have a chance to look at it, analyze it, and decide if it's something that they want their children exposed to. Um, that way, we'll get really accurate results, and we can analyze the data, um, as accurately as possible. And secondly, I'd just like to say that, again, this administration has been given opportunity after opportunity to stand up and protect and preserve our children's innocence, their childhood, and their minds. For the time being, it seems that we've chosen the route of indoctrination, the route of grooming, the route of sexualizing children. In what world is this okay? History and science show, I'm a nurse, I know, that sexual, introducing sexual content, information, and images to the developing minds of children can result in disastrous consequences, not the least of which is mental illness. Their minds simply lack the capacity to process the information being thrown at them. And why? Over twenty-five some odd towns and districts in this state have chosen a much less extreme route. As others have pointed out, they have either chosen to utilize the existing prior standards, or provide parents an opportunity to opt in to this instruction, either after school or on the last day of school. These options are more than satisfactory and meet the required standards for everyone, regardless of where you fall in this matter.[892.37][892.37](APPLAUSE)
Madam President, senior, when you come to the podium, Mr. Moffett, first.
Second.
Mr. Prasakos?
Uh, Madam President, uh, may I make a motion to take a ten-minute recess?
I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that hasn't been done before, but let me check. Thank you. Is that? Okay. All right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if there were two motions, you wanna have one motion at a time, and with each motion, you have to have a second to have a discussion and to consider it.
Right. Okay. So, Mr. Prasakos, would you like to make a motion, and we'll get a second?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a ten-minute recess.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fatale? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Duffy? Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Okay.
Mrs. Kumar?
Okay.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Certainly.
Thank you. We'll be recessing for ten minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay, we still have a quorum. Okay. I don't know. Oh, there he is. Let's go Duffy. Thank you. The meeting is back in session. Do I have a motion?
Move second.
This is Kazan, Mr. Fatale. Thank you. Okay, where are we? Okay. We have some retirements to celebrate this evening. So, are you ready, Mr. Fatale? Thank you.
Mark Pirtanazi. After 33 years of hard work and dedication, Mark Pirtanazi is retiring from the Wayne Board of Education. Mark began as a custodian in 1989. In 1994, he moved on to become a carpenter and has since been a stable on our maintenance team. Mark has always been an effective team player, contributing his skills and craftsmanship wherever needed and collaborating on many projects over the years. Mark's willingness to help others extend beyond his work here with us at Wayne. He found meaningful charity work with Oxford House, where he builds and furnishes recovery homes for those struggling with sobriety. While Mark will be missed, he certainly deserves the many new opportunities his retirement will surely offer, playing guitar and spending time with his children and grandchildren. The Facilities Department wishes him a great retirement and thanks him for his service here at Wayne.
Thank you.
Veronica Remart. Veronica Candy Remart will be retiring from the Transportation Department on August 31st, 2022. Candy became, began her career as a bus driver on September 1, 2009. Over the course of her 13 years of service to the Wayne Township Public Schools, she's always been committed to her work responsibilities. As she leaves her job with us, Candy will be embarking on a new lifetime, a new time in her life with many hours to enjoy her grandchildren. Excuse me. A mere retirement allow the time to do things she loves, avoid the things she doesn't like to do. The Transportation Department and the Wayne Public Township Schools wish to express their sincere thanks and appreciation for outstanding support and dedicated service. From all your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement.
Mr. Prasakos?
Rosalia Jerezza. Rosalia Jerezza is retiring after 11 years as a member of our hard-working custodial team. Rosa joined us as a part-time custodian in 2011, but quickly moved on to a full-time role at George Washington Middle School within her first year. Rosa takes pride in everything she does and has provided quality service throughout her time here. Her delightful personality and natural leadership gained her a head custodial role at Randall Carter from 2016 to 2020. Rosa returned to GW as day custodian in the 2020 school year, where she was an integral asset to her team and school community, helping everyone through the last few years in every way she could. Her team says she was almost too helpful at times, leaving little for them to do. She embraced every challenge and made friends all along the way. She was open, honest, and good-natured to her coworkers and built lasting relationships we all will cherish. Rosa's team here at Wayne is happy for her next chapter and imagine she'll enjoy doing what she loves, spending time with her husband, children, and grandchildren in Florida, and caring for her flocks of pigeons, sheep, little lambs, chicken, and more. We thank her for her dedication and wish her all the best.
Thank you. Mrs. Kumar?
Holly Wormald. We are here today to show our respect for Ms. Holly Wormald. Holly has spent 15 years supporting students and programs as a paraprofessional. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared-in-classroom paraprofessional. Holly has touched many lives along the way, including fellow colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. She always puts students first and treats all with kindness and respect. Holly has excellent attendance and has always provided consistency and diligence to all assignments. Holly, you will be missed. Wayne Township Public Schools wishes you good luck in your future endeavors. Enjoy retirement with your family.
We also have committee reports this evening. Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I'll start with the first committee, which met this evening at 4:30. The Facilities and Transportation Committee, which was attended by myself, Mr. Fatale, and administrators Lauren Tibbetts, Peter Romain, Richard Skibitsky, and William Moffett. We discussed the items on the agenda, which in this case was a policy about facilities use. The project update. This is lengthy. Some of it was already addressed by Dr. Toback, but since I still have more here, I may do a little redundancy. I'm sorry for that. We're installing new video surveillance cameras district-wide. So, that project is almost completed in, I'm going to say 80% of the schools, and we're down to the stragglers at GW and Anthony Wayne. They're larger buildings and may take a little longer. The vestibules, as Dr. Toback pointed out, there's some supply chain issues with, but they expect to complete the three that were scheduled, JFK, Anthony Wayne, and Wayne Valley shortly. The Ryerson roof is underway. The, as we called it, the smelly part is over with, so it's just a matter of doing the touch-up around the perimeter and the edges, so it'll be safe for the children to return to school, but hopefully it'll be done before that. We have the Next Generation Science Labs going in at Wayne Valley. Three rooms should be complete. The only thing that's really pending is an HVAC component, but again, supply chain. Generators at the bus garage and maintenance are scheduled to be installed. We also started a room for Wayne Valley High School for what's called esports. That is going to be part of our unified sports program for our special needs students. It's grant-funded and it's part of the Special Olympics and another great program for our special needs students, but I'm assuming since it's unified, there'll be regular ed students in there as well. The architect contract is on the agenda. We discussed that. Science labs, there will be withdrawals from the maintenance and capital reserves for those. And HVAC replacement. There's a situation at the board office. The cooling system went kaput unexpectedly, and this is why we have reserves. So, we're going to be removing money for that. That's a $825,000 project. And we move on to transportation. The retired equipment or aged-out vehicles will be going to auction. Staffing is still an issue, but we feel that we're ready for the opening of the school year with the routes that Mr. Skibitsky worked very hard on to make sure that all of the bases were covered. We're still waiting for vehicles we ordered in 2021. So, that's an ongoing issue. And the legislature attempted to help with that by extending the retirement age of the buses by one year, because we have buses that are aging out, which obviously, thankfully, we have our own maintenance department to keep in good running order, but it is time to let that bus, or those buses, go. The PCTI routes are in order. There's a new program at Pacanac that requires their own routes, which is something that kind of came up last minute for Mr. Skibitsky, but he's handling it. The bus passes. Now, those are going to be coming to you via email. So, be on the lookout. Pretty sure an email is going to go out to everybody informing them that that's the case. So, this way, this is something they can even put on your child's phone, that they can show their bus pass. Easy-peasy, no one has to print them out, but you can print them out if you wish. New vehicle orders are going out. We discussed the legislation. Okay, that concludes Facilities and Transportation.
Do you need a break?
No. Then we moved on to Finance Committee, which again, was attended by myself and Mr. Fatale and administrators William Moffett and Cheryl Leidig. That started at 5 o'clock today. We discussed the agenda items. Nothing there, all pro forma. We discussed the resolution that's on tonight's agenda, more importantly. The state of New Jersey, in its infinite wisdom, saved us millions of dollars by offering us this great state health benefits program. We spent weeks, months, days getting the district ready, all excited about these savings. And now rumor has it that six months into the program, they may increase it by 15%, because they're on a different fiscal year than we are. So, all of the savings may end up going poof, up in smoke. So, the resolution that's on the agenda this evening is to partner with the school boards across the state to let them know that, yeah, you need to sharpen your pencil, find some money in your reserves, and not hit us with this enormous increase in January, which wasn't budgeted for. We obviously assumed there may be some increase, but no one was anticipating 15%. We came to an agreement with the school physician. We discussed bond counsel for the referendum. There were three bids that came back, and we made a recommendation to move one forward to the next agenda. We will be going out for bid on the landscaping now that the season is over and hopefully have that wrapped up by January. We went over the financial reports, the reserve withdrawals, which are already discussed for facility, and the business office. We heard early on in the evening about the unfortunate passing of one of our employees. And then we have another one that's going out for long-term health reasons. So, we're going to be bringing in an accountant who will be an interim for now, and we'll be hiring for that other position temporarily. The audit will begin in October. And that concludes Finance.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Kumar?
I'll start with Kumar first. So, the Education Committee met on July 25th, virtually at 12:00 PM. In attendance were Suzanne, Ms. Putup, Ms. Wentec, Ms. Auerbach, Mr. Bignanelli, myself, and Ms. Reichman. We reviewed three residency requests. We went over a foreign exchange student that may be coming to District, and we reviewed the comprehensive health and PE summer curriculum work. We were all in agreement that the curriculum overall was well-written. Ms. Wentec particularly liked the run-chat-tell lesson. We also, after further review, decided that the cross-the-line activity does need to be looked at, so that is happening. And there were small grammatical word-choice comments by Ms. Putup and myself on the overall curriculum. And that concludes my report for Education Committee. The Communications Committee is the next one. We met today at 5 o'clock in Dr. Toback's office with Dr. Toback, Mr. Duffy, Ms. Wentec was virtual, and myself. We discussed recent media coverage. We went over less talk usage and how it's been perceived, which seemed to be pretty positive. And the response back from our school district seemed to be pretty quick. And we talked about the start of school and a communication that's going to be sent out along with the district rules. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos?
Reporting for the Personnel Committee. We had a meeting on Tuesday, August 16th, at 6:00 PM in person. Mrs. Clark, the Director of HR, Compliance and Labor Relations was in attendance. Mrs. Reichman, Mrs. Putup, the chairperson, Mr. Bubba. And we dialed in Dr. Toback for a phone call for a few minutes for item number seven. We reviewed the July 19, 2022 Personnel Committee minutes. We reviewed a employee leave, which we moved to tonight's agenda for approval. We reviewed Bylaw 0163 Quorum in regards to adopting the bylaw for details and procedure around invoking the doctrine of necessity. We had proposed transfers, which we moved to tonight's agenda for approval. A litigation update. The dress and grooming policy for the staff. We updated some language. And we had discussions and revisions surrounding the lead teacher of athletics and student activities for the job description to be called Coordinator of Athletics and Student Activities for both high schools.
Thank you, Mr. Prasakos. Okay. Next is action on agenda items.
Madam President, if I can make a motion to move the entire agenda?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duffy, Mrs. Kazan. Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs., Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The agenda has passed, and now we have gotten to the public comments portion, the open portion. This part of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Putup. Somebody asked me on break. I just wanted to clarify the incident.
Excuse me, Madam President?
I messed up. Excuse me a moment. I need a motion to open.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fatale. Sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Pam Masick. Just wanted to clarify, somebody asked me. It wasn't a teacher. It was a substance abuse counselor that that incident happened at Wayne Valley, and that's, just wanted to clarify that. Ms. Kazan had said that the school boards across the state are uniting about the health care benefits, I believe it was, that they were standing up to the state to sharpen their pencils and go back. I don't understand why we can't do that about this curriculum issue. Why can't our school board unite with other school boards and go back to the state and say, "Sharpen your pencils and change this curriculum"? We've asked for resolutions, to be written letters, and you're our voice, you represent us. There's other Board of Eds. So, I ask that this issue is just as important as the need for your appropriate health benefits. So, if you would please consider doing that. Also, I would like to suggest a forum like we've had in the past about this curriculum. Many parents were thinking we were going to look at slides. And like we've heard, it seems that the emails and the "let's talk" are not getting through. Maybe there's a glitch somehow, just like links are missing and some parents have trouble navigating through these slides. Why not have a forum? Maybe even one night elementary school, since we're going to postpone this and this curriculum supposedly won't be introduced till the end of the year. We have time to have three nights so that both parents can attend, since they have children in different grade levels. Let's have an elementary school night, a middle school night, a high school night, and let's show the slides and let there be an open question-and-answer time period where there can be dialogue instead of just... Because this is insufficient. This is egregiously insufficient to tackle this sensitive topic. And we want to bring the community together, and I think that would be a very productive solution for that.
And, just a minute, I have five minutes. And that's it. Thank you.
And, that's it, thank you.
Hi. Kathy Sissow, Ryerson Ave. My son Patrick has been accepted into the Montclair State Early College Program. This program was brought in and promoted by Wayne Valley, at Valley, in the spring of 2018. My daughter was able to take advantage of this program and start at college more prepared than her classmates. When she began college, she had less stress than many of her classmates because she was better prepared. I would like to give my son the same opportunity. Too many of today's students go off to college only to come home their second semester because they're unprepared. I am being told this is not possible. He wants to attend Montclair in the morning and arrive to school prior to lunch, so that he can continue to participate in the course program. This is the only time the course teacher is available at Wayne Valley because she shared with Anthony Wayne. I have been given several reasons as to why he cannot do this, but not one of them aligns with the district's mission statement. The statement is, "We are dedicated to a constant evaluation of our current systems and policies and enact necessary changes to ensure equity and opportunity for all. Under the guiding principle that education is a human right, we provide students with equitable access to education that empowers them positively, to positively engage in our democratic society and contribute to the global community." The following are the reasons I was told why he is not able to be, to take morning classes at Montclair. One, for the Early College Experience Program, we have not had a student take a morning class. An afternoon class would work better with our schedule, where he leaves the building in the afternoon. Two, he does not have the four hours needed for it to count as a school day. Three, it's never been done before. Four, we do not have a thick study hall prior to lunch. My responses to those questions, those answers were, just because it works better with the high school schedule does not mean it should not be done. The answer is in direct conflict to your mission statement. Enact necessary changes to ensure equality and opportunity for all. Two, he would have the four hours. He would arrive to school by 10:00, giving him more than four hours. Three, it has never been done before. Really? This is a response I received from administration. If we go through life because things have never been done, how do we make progress? Four, we do not have a thick study hall prior to lunch. No, but you have a library where he can go. He can go for a study hall in the library. I followed the chain of command, beginning with the school counselor, VP, principal, supervisor of secondary education, and Dr. Toback. Just today, Dr. Toback told me that it was the building administration gave me a list of reasons why this would not be educationally sound decision. All I ask is that my son be allowed to come to school after Montclair, start with a study hall, and then complete the four classes he needs to graduate. None of this would cost the district more money. None of this would require any changes to the current schedule. So now I ask you, Board of Ed members, what reason can you give me to explain why this is not educationally sound?
Norman Robertson, resident of Wayne. I'm not really going to say much at all. I read a book once, it was about negotiations, but I loved the title. The title was Getting to Yes. If you can hear our previous speaker and not want to get to yes, then we have a real problem. Just wanted to say that. And the other thing I only came up to ask is, can anybody represent to us, first of all, whether that September 8th meeting will be here or in the conference room? Can anybody tell me that? And if you don't want to answer, because you have a rule, then you understand why I'm asking the question. Can you answer, Mr. Superintendent? It's a decision for the Board. Oh, well, maybe, could we have a motion that we answer the question at the moment?
Sorry, we will make comments during Old Business or New Business. Yes.
I know where your rule is. That's one of the reasons I'm saying it. Now you understand why people wonder what's really happening. Not that there's any big conspiracy, but the point is that we deserve to know. You know, and I shouldn't have to traverse your website in order to find it out. And you know, and you're reinforcing the administration's denial to this young lady and her son, by being so stuck to the rules that you can't informally, I mean, happy you voted okay when, you know, when Harry needed a break, and, you know, and that was fine. Well, let me say that Ms. Kazan also was correct before, when she asked, when are the board members going to know about what happened in let's talk? When I heard that the board members weren't being fed everything as it was coming in, I was shocked. As somebody who's had public office, I wouldn't take that for 10 seconds. All right? Those are the only points I want to make. Thanks for your courtesy.
Ryan Badisch, 63, Camila Drive. Make sure it's loud enough. I get told I'm too quiet. I just want to finish where I finished off beforehand. I think the communication that we need to be able to get, sorry, still too quiet? Keep moving it up. I'll move it closer. I think the communication that we need to get around this is, you know, needs to be befitting of the two years that we've been having the conversation. The cross-the-line class actually came up a number of times through there in the move forward, move back, in various different iterations, that we were told at the time that this wouldn't be part of the curriculum. And so, like, I am really worried that that communication backwards and forwards isn't always getting through, and isn't always coming across in the same way. If this is a surprise to anybody, that, you know, people are upset about that specific class. I don't think that's the only thing. I think that's by far and away the most egregious. It's only been 52 hours, a little bit more now. But during that time, I think that, you know, there are, people have been very much caught up on that. There's going to be lots of other things that come out that are probably much more smaller and minor. There's been a set of conversation about some of the oral sex sections that are within there. There's a set of conversations about some of the second-grade material and stuff as well. I hope that it's not all as obvious and controversial as the cross-the-line thing, but I would expect a lot more of that to be coming back and coming out of these. So, I'm not sure that you want to rely just solely on the let's talk and hopefully go through and get to another meeting, and then just vote on it and move forward. I think you might want a little more community engagement. I think you might want to be able to go out and actually hear, have much more of a conversation about the way that this is working and the way that people are feeling about this, so that we can engage a lot more in being able to get some of these points across. I would move, not even for primary schools and secondary schools and those things, maybe even just for a proper hearing, where we can sit down and ask questions and go backwards and forwards, and like, walk through all of the presentational stuff, and get to a point where everybody's on board with where this is, and what is right, and what is wrong, and what the problems are. And outside of that, I would, you know, I know someone came in to talk specifically about the AD as well, and so on as well. So, like, I don't want to take away from that individual thing. I know there's been a lot of discussions about other things tonight. Like, don't forget about the AD as well, because I think that that's an important issue. Thank you.
Neil Kavanaugh, Wayne resident. For me, cursory glance of what we saw tonight, I don't even have to delve into the exact lesson plans. What I saw with desensitized children to sexual allergy, it's exactly the type of stuff that groomers will use and show, making children work susceptible to child exploitation and trafficking. They may have heard of sex before, they may have heard it around the streets or in the classrooms, they may have heard of a lot of things. They may also have heard of crack, methamphetamine, pot, and heroin, too. But we don't show them how to cook meth, smoke it, or crack, or shoot up smack, or roller joint, or do we? Or is that where we're going next? With the threat of losing funding, and if that's what we're being counseled, I would suggest we seek outside counsel, if our present council is not willing to help us on that, if that's where we decide to go in voting against this curriculum. On the other part, for members who, anybody here who supports the transgender individuals, who are in support of them, will you also support and speak about and share the stories of those detransitioning? I can tell you from stories I've read, they're horrifying, gut-wrenching. All across Europe and the rest of the world, puberty blockers, double mastectomies, genital removal are being banned on minors. Affirming someone in their confusion is not love or encouragement. It leads to further confusion, which can be destructive. The issue here, we're talking about in detransition, there's about 3% of the children that are confused on their gender or dysphoria. 80%, over 80%, will revert to their biological sex assigned at conception and left alone, given the love and support they deserve and need. This 30 to 30% that we're hearing of now lately has happened in the last two or three years, when children were forced home to virtual learning and were exposed to gender ideology online. Many sought out to help to explain their depression, sense of isolation, lack of self-awareness, or positive encouragement. If anyone causes, and I'll finish with this, I had others things, I think. Now, too, I'm a believer, like, the one young woman spoke earlier. I'd just like to recite Psalm 139, as to what David said about how he thought God thought of him. "For you formed me in my inward parts; you wove me in my mother's womb. I will give thanks to you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made, wonderful are your works, and my soul knows it very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in secret and scarefully walked in the depths of the earth. Your eyes have seen my unformed substance, and in your book were written all the days were ordained for me, when as yet was not one of them came to be. How precious are your thoughts, O God of me! How vast is the sum of them! If I should count them, they would outnumber the sand. When I awake, I am still with you." And one last one, from Jesus, from Matthew. Cautionary statement as to how he feels about his children that he created. If anyone causes any one of these little children of mine harm, it would be better for them to have a millstone hung around their net and tossed into the sea. This is how Jesus views our children. How about you? How about me? Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Tori Esposito, I jumped the gun there before. Yeah, if you could please address the survey that was sent out, more than just an email that the district was not involved with it. Also, to Ms. Kazan, Wayne voters will do better than 1-2-3 in November, and we'll show you we do have a brain. This year, it's the perfect math, 2 plus 3 equals 5.
I sort of missed that. Hi.
Hi, my name is Tom Van Den Berg. It seems I always like to wait until the end to ask questions based, oh, you can't hear me? Okay. You hear me now? Thank you, I appreciate that. I often like to wait until the end to hear what everyone has had to say. I think it's pretty obvious that everyone disagrees with the cross-the-line, not everyone, but many people have spoken disagree with the cross-the-line activity or want to modify it in some way, that doesn't, you know, have students actually speak about themselves. I know that after about fifth, sixth grade, I was with a single mom, and so, I don't know if I initially would have wanted to, you know, if I'd want to cross the line that way and be involved in that. That said, there has been quite a bit of discussion, or claims, I should say, that this curriculum has pornography in it, that it sexualizes children, but I haven't heard anything specifically about the lessons themselves. So, I hope that during the next public hearing, there will be actual specifics said, not just claims made. During the break, I spoke with someone who claimed that there was, you know, what was the term, sexualizing of children, but I didn't hear a response as to what specifically in this, and not in the, you know, the curriculum that was, sort of the state-level curriculum that was given, but the actual specific lessons themselves, what's problematic in them. I think it's really important to look at the specific lessons themselves, so we can actually talk about facts. Otherwise, we're just making things up. That's the issue. If we don't have specifics, if we aren't talking about the lessons themselves, we're making things up. Thank you so much.
Hi, Mark Faber. So, I guess the parts that I raised about the sexualization of children that I raised earlier, were about teaching my second-grade daughter that boys have a penis and girls have a vagina, and that they're different parts. That's sexual parts, and you're teaching, you know, they reference them as private parts that are covered by a bathing suit, which automatically triggers something that's going to be uncomfortable for children like that to talk about. Now, I don't know much about animal sex, or animal reproduction, but I do know that mammals, whether it's a dog, monkey, they all procreate the same way. So, you have to explain that you have to take something, and you have to put it somewhere, and then something happens, and it procreates. Now, my first lesson in reproduction was plants. I didn't learn about animals or mammals having sex, but that is a sexual act. Now, there isn't sexual response in the sense that it's something that they take pleasure in, they do it for procreation, but you're teaching second graders the act of sex. So, that is sexualization. It's, I don't care how you're trying to spin it. You're exposing them to something in the hopes that they'll figure something out later on in life, but in second grade, that is something they should not have to comprehend. I'm sorry. It's in the curriculum for second grade.
Is it in a slide? Is it in a video?
It's in the lesson plan. There's a whole lesson plan that says animal reproduction. So, if you haven't seen it, it's hard to talk to you about it, but it's there. So, that is sexualization of children, because that's inappropriate for second-grade children. My daughter actually had somebody who used to peek in on her when she went to the bathroom in kindergarten. And she now has to change in a room with a locked door, and she won't change in front of her siblings, because of an experience that she had while she was in school. Now, you take something as simple as somebody peeking into a stall, and then you actually, you know, amplify it with these other kind of conversations, that is going to be really detrimental to my daughter. Now, I told you before, I will opt out. However, it is not appropriate, you talk about age-appropriate conversations, that is not age-appropriate. And I know, because I didn't learn about that kind of stuff till sixth grade. Was it more age-appropriate? Probably better than second grade. But these are the kind of conversations that, you know, you can't, I just have to ask why? Why is it necessary to do it? Like, what is the benefit? What is the, if you go, you know, who is designing this and recommending it, and for what purpose? What is the actual benefit to having a second grader know how animals reproduce? And if somebody could explain that, or bring that to your next meeting, what the actual rationale is behind why they need to know this in second grade? You know, like, I can understand, math is a building process. You need to learn how to do addition before you can do multiplication. Why is it necessary for second grade? Why is it necessary for third grade? You know, why are all of these things needing to be taught so early? And, so, that I would want to know. So, if you can give me that one, I'd appreciate it.
So, Cindy Simon, Ransfield Road. So, I spent the morning going through the curriculum, clicking on the links, reading the slides, and kept downloading it a couple of times because it kept getting messed up, but that's a tech issue. And I read the second-grade animal reproduction slides and stuff, and you know what it said? It said, "Some animals lay eggs. Some animals have live babies." And then it talked about marsupials and things jumping in the pouches, and birds bringing worms to their babies, and I forget what the other ones were. The emperor penguin, where the dad keeps the egg warm while mom goes and gets while mom goes and gets food, and then she comes back and keeps the chick warm while dad gets food. That's what that lecture is. It's not about what any kid who lives on a farm or already knows about reproduction by the time he or she reaches second grade. It's literally, it's the amphibians and reptiles, and if I screw this up, the biology teacher's going to yell at me, are the ones that lay eggs, and the mammals have live babies. Unless you're Duckville Platypus, although that wasn't in there. That's what that is. So I just, you know, I think it's really, really important to have these conversations and to have people be aware what's in the curriculum. But I ask everybody to please talk about specifically in this school district, what is in there that you find inappropriate? I respect that some people don't want a seven-year-old or an eight-year-old to know the word penis or vagina. Honestly, there are people that teach those words to their children from the get-go, rather than whatever other names are out there. They're not necessarily associated with sex, and nobody's talking about sex in second grade. There's not a single sexual act in the second-grade curriculum. Which one?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wendy Lamandry. I have just one comment. The slide directly after the slide that somebody just mentioned specifically requires or requests that a second-grade student define their sexual organs. Is that appropriate? Do they need to know that? I mean, I'm just saying, they don't need to know that. I think in addition, what would have been really helpful in tonight's forum would have been to open up one lesson plan, just one, and go through the slides with just one. Click on them and go through it so that we were reassured that, and again, assuming that we're confident in the honesty and the transparency of this board and of the administration here, it would have been really helpful. The other thing I was wondering was, which teacher has a psychology degree? Which teacher is going to identify a student who is so uncomfortable that he or she goes home and tells their mom, "It's awful. I don't want to go back to school"? And then what? Do you guys have... Does everybody here have an opportunity to... And who's going to address those students? Who's going to address the student who says, "Joey couldn't do that"? Or, "Ha, ha, ha, look at Suzie. She's all red in the face"? Kids are mean. And you, we're trying to teach kindness by what? By identifying what? Sexual preference, body parts, whatever else? We all turned out okay. What's the problem? Yeah. You know what? People get bullied, and it's awful. And in high school, everybody knew that I was going to protect anybody who bullied, because guess what? Charity and goodness and kindness begins at home. My parents taught me never, ever make fun of somebody who's less than you or is disabled or whatever. I don't need a teacher to teach my grandson how to be kind. I teach my grandson how to be kind. I teach him love. I teach him honesty. I teach him respect. And the other thing I wanted to know is, who's talking about the drug problem in this town? Who's talking about alcohol abuse in this town? We should all be meeting and talking about that. Part of the forum should be that. Kids are dying every day. People, what happened during COVID? Did anybody ever pick up the ball and run with it? What kids were drinking every night of the week? What parents are ashamed to share it? What kids have started using drugs? What about setting something up where, honestly, that people can just talk about that issue? Instead of this sexual crap, it's crap. It's crap. No one gets to talk to my kid about their body parts. It opens up a Pandora's box. It's dangerous. Masturbation? Hello? Who used to go into the Willowbrook Mall and see a man walking along, following women, doing his thing in his car? You called the police. Now we make it like it's normal? It's okay to masturbate. Please. Everybody take a good look in the mirror and think about your past. Think about the future and think about the gosh-darn kids of this town. It's about time people wake the freak up and show up.
What?
I'm sorry, just one second. When I speak, I'm talking to you guys because you have some power. You have some ability to make a change and to help. These parents are showing up here, and everybody is showing up here all the time at these meetings. I'm a nurse. I'm a registered nurse. I work full-time. I have a husband. I have a grandson. I have whatever. Yeah, sorry about that. That was... But the point of the matter is, you understand. Okay, thanks. Thanks. No judgment. But here's the thing. I'm frustrated, and everybody's frustrated. So I mean no disrespect. Please understand that. Okay, that's from my heart. I really, really don't. But I think honestly, everybody here has really good points, but we've got to take it a little bit more seriously. It's not like just like, blah, blah, blah. People really care about their kids. Thank you.
Frances Gally, Wayne resident. Five minutes, hi. Five minutes ago, I was sitting on my couch watching this back and forth again and again. This year marks 20 years I've had kids in the Wayne school system. I've been proud to walk along many of you from elementary school through a lot of other issues. I look at the good and I look at the bad. It infuriates me, the lack of transparency and understanding on things that should be so basic. Five minutes ago, there were people who asked for examples. A year ago, Dr. Toback, you urged the parents to please read the curriculum before you step to this mic. So I did. Four separate occasions this year, I've had to deal with school and district administrators unquestionable curriculum items. In one case, the curriculum was scrubbed of the material when my daughter was inappropriately surveyed on what she would do if she found herself pregnant at 16. Here's your example. The district administrator, I swore I wouldn't stand here because that's not how I operate. But I am infuriated that we stand here blindly and say this stuff doesn't transpire in the classroom. It is our collective obligation to raise these issues, which I did. And in this one I'm about to read, it was addressed. And it was agreed that, you know what? This probably wasn't the best example to use. And when I was asked what was the kid's response? I said, "When the shock value of the examples are so great, you lose the message of what you're trying to communicate." So here goes. The 62 pages of the AP Psychology has one reference to morality. The lesson plan? Moral dilemmas. Julie is traveling to France on summer vacation from college with her brother, Mark. One night, they decide that it would be interesting and fun if they tried making love. Julie is already taking birth control pills, but Mark uses a condom, too, just to be safe. They both enjoy the sex but decide not to do it again. They keep the night as a special secret, which makes them feel closer to each other. What do you think about that? Is it okay for them to make love? Here's example number two. A woman is cleaning out her closet and finds her old American flag. She doesn't want to fly the flag anymore, so she cuts it up into pieces and uses the rags to clean her bathroom. I challenge you. What if somebody changed that flag? What if it was an LGBTQ flag that was cut up and used for the bathroom? What if it was a Black Lives Matter? Who really cares what the flag is? What's the purpose of the message? Why are we even challenging our kids with, quite frankly, this crap? When is it the position of our education system to normalize incest? If the subject matter is a moral dilemma, for high school kids, there's got to be a pro and a con, right? It's a dilemma. Let's have a group discussion. Why are we discussing incest? And I swore I wouldn't stand here, but after listening this go round and round, I don't care what side of the aisle you sit on. We've got to figure this stuff out, and don't pretend it's not happening. And by virtue of the example, cross the line? You don't have to look at the details. What is that statement saying? So can I cross the line and ask you all, is incest okay? Is that really the lesson we want to teach our kids? Come on. You have parents, stop hitting each other against each other. We're all here for the same purpose. It's not who's right and who's wrong. But you know what? Some things are clearly wrong, and they're happening in this district, and we're better than this.
Second. This portion of the meeting is reserved for... Oh, I'm sorry. I know. Dr. Toback, administration?
Okay, so I'd like to just mention, I know that there was a lot that was said this evening. And I would like to talk about basically... Okay. So, excuse me? You're okay right now? Okay, very good. Okay. So there was a lot that was said this evening. And what I've done is I've taken pages of notes. In some cases, people gave their names. In some cases, people did not. So what I generally did was I kind of went by subject. Okay? Now, the other thing I'd just like to mention is that typically, board meetings involve public comment. And generally speaking, if you watch board meetings from across the state, the administration generally doesn't respond back. The board doesn't respond back. But here we do. And here, that's part of our commitment to the community. We'd like to provide you with answers, and we like to provide them at board meetings whenever possible. And so that's what we will continue to do tonight. I may not be able to answer every question. I may not choose to answer every question because there's some things that were also statements. So there were statements, there were questions, but what I'm going to do is my best to kind of explain a response. So first of all, the whole idea about, you know, not having any dialogue. I think that if you look back over the pandemic, the district has a significant history of all sorts of dialogue. We provide parents with FAQs. Like I said, we respond to hundreds, if not thousands, of questions during the course of the pandemic, and we'll continue to do so. We'll continue to respond to questions that are asked about the district. In this particular case, I wanted to talk about, well, there's a few things. So first of all, Let's Talk. For those of you who have actually used it, there is, there's an important part that you understand that not only is there a response that's given to you, but you get to rate the response. And that information is reviewed, interestingly, by the Board of Ed. Sometimes people write things into Let's Talk, so not everything is immediately shared with the Board of Ed because it's not intended for public view. It's sometimes there are questions or things that are brought up that are personal in nature. So, but these particular items, any of the items related to the health and key standards would be shared with the board. Okay? Although we would redact names. Now, the other thing is, we've never heard of any situation. This is the first time we've heard of Let's Talk not working, and I don't believe that's the case. I do know that the question that was asked was for Mrs. Reichman was when the information was released about the curriculum, how many Let's Talk inquiries were there? And at that point, she said there was three, plus some emails. Other people may have written at other times, and there are more inquiries about the health and key standards, but not the question that she was asked. So there's two different, there's a time factor here that was not considered. Okay? So the other thing is, there was a question about substitute teachers and would they be required to have vaccines? So that question is an important question. The requirement to test for vaccines, and the reason why that came to be is because of the overly burdensome nature of testing for substitutes all the time and making sure that there's no way for the district to do it. So there's no longer a need to do that. So substitutes would not be required to have vaccines. You also asked the same question regarding, or I'm sorry, a question about the cross-curricular nature of the lessons that are presented this evening. Okay? So the answer is that the cross-curricular, these are single lessons, and they're intended to be delivered as single lessons. So they should not cross over into other areas. They are one period, except whatever's noted. That might be two days, right, or two periods. But otherwise, it's one period. I would like to talk a little bit about the cross-the-line game, just very quickly. So I guess the main point is that the committee from the board has already looked at the issue, has raised concerns. I understand many of you have concerns about it. So it's not that anyone is necessarily committed to having this game as part of the curriculum. We've heard your feedback. And the other part about it, though, that I really wanted to share is that I think for our teachers and the members of the curriculum team, the one thing that did happen tonight is there was kind of like, like an insidious edge that was placed on the development of this game and the fact that it was being considered as part of this, these lessons. That was certainly not the intent of the committee. And the people who are on the committee are, contrary to what was said, are people who live in this community in many cases. They're people who have kids in school. So it's not that there's like some separate group of people from some other area that don't have kids that would be involved in this. The people on the committee were, in fact, teachers working in the district, living in the community, with kids in school in many cases. The other question was raised about parents and parent involvement. So obviously, if parents are involved in committees, certainly, we have a number, but it's limited. In other words, we can't have dozens of parents involved in committees. So we had a committee that I spoke about from the spring where we made adjustments to the GPA. We had a number of board members that attended that meeting. And sure enough, the board members, I'm certain, can attest to the fact that numerous parents attended the meeting, were involved in the process. And I'm not really quite sure what else to say. It doesn't mean that parents aren't involved in committee work because maybe perhaps the parents that you may know were not necessarily involved. There's only so many ways that we could do that. Another point that was made, there was a woman who came to the podium. I don't believe she's here anymore, but she spoke about a book about suicide, and she showed some images about something that she found. But she found it in the Wayne Public Library, right? That was not something that she got from our school system. It's something that's available in the library here in the township. I'm assuming that she's accurate about where she got this information from, right? But that would obviously be an issue to be addressed with our library board, not the Board of Education. She also claimed that we spoke about the immigrant and LGBTQ community. We did not. There was a question about contracts. So when there are different vendors, and a concern about transparency. So for every board meeting, there is a section that calls for contracts. That section has all the different vendors that are being hired for different reasons in the district. And so anyone who is brought in to evaluate our special education program will be bought in and would be approved by the Board of Ed and under the contract section. So it's always available for members of the public to look about what contracts the board will or won't be approving. Okay? That's that we have here. Okay. All right, we talked about that. So one of the issues that was raised was the topic of the athletic director at Wayne Hills. Okay? So the model that we're pursuing for the time being is a model that was used here previously, a number of years ago, where there was a single athletic director. That was done out of necessity. The same situation exists now, and then this is being done out of necessity. The district recognizes that having an athletic director for each high school would be beneficial. The district did run an interview process. The district did interview a number of candidates and did not find that the candidates that we identified, we weren't confident that they would be able to take over a program like Wayne Hills. Maybe in a smaller district, maybe there's other opportunities, but not at Wayne Hills, not with the expectations that are there, and not with the excellent coaching staff we have. We needed somebody that we felt would maybe perhaps have more experience and someone who is able to handle a responsibility like... and someone who, um, is able to, to handle a responsibility like that. So, um, we do have support staff in place. The question about, well, what happens in the event the athletic director is absent? Well, the athletic director, we don't have an athletic director in the district, so that's an important thing to understand. We do have assistant principals, and we have multiple assistant principals. So like in any other situation, if the athletic director is absent, which does happen, other people cover for the athletic director who's actually an assistant principal, right? So the assistant principals take over. Let's see what else we have here. One of the questions that was raised was, why is this being done now? And there were accusations made against the Board about the fact is that the, these lessons are being presented now for a less than honorable reason, to sneak this in, to do something that the public doesn't know about. But if you recall, it was many of the people who are in this room who, at the end of the school year, were demanding that this has to be done before the start of the upcoming school year. The summer at the time was explained is prime time for the school district to write curriculum. That's exactly what we did, and right now, we're presenting this information before the start of the school year, because the, the desire was for parents to be able to opt out, or, or some people were saying, well, they're going to take their children out of the school, things like that. So, um, I just wanted to respond to that, um, statement. It's not quite accurate. Let's see here, what else do I have? We have subs, we have the vaccine. With regard to the, the idea of opting out, so one speaker talked about, well, in Middletown, they, you have to opt in, or something like that. So, um, Mr. Geppert previously commented about the opt-out option. The, the legislation that we're required to follow is very specific about what you have to do.
Yeah, the current statute provides for the opt-out provision, but says nothing about an opt-in arrangement.
Okay? So it's just, it's just the way, it's the way the, the requirement is written, right? It's an opt-out requirement, um, which will be provided. So the other part is this, that, um, I mean, ultimately, Let's Talk, like I said, if you, if you write to Let's Talk, you get an answer, you get a response. Sometimes it's not, you know, it depends on the nature of the question and what we can respond to. But the other thing is that, um, there's obviously a process that the Board put in place, a thoughtful process. So this is a, a first step, with the idea being that we will be collecting information over the next few weeks, and trying to identify the actual issues that are out there. One thing, and some of the other speakers spoke about this, that would be very helpful, is we heard a lot of feedback about cross-the-line, very specific information, very specific concerns. Some of the speakers mentioned the idea that it's really important to provide specific feedback about different things that you find objectionable. So, like I said, tonight, we heard about cross-the-line, but we didn't hear about anything else, really. We heard about the specifics of cross-the-line, and, um, from there, that, if there are other comments or concerns, certainly, we can do that. And like I said, it would be shared with the Board. Someone said that this information won't be shared with the Board. It'll certainly be shared with the Board. I guess... I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Is there anything else? Okay. So, right, so, right, so somebody raised concerns about threat assessments being used as like a, a tool to interrogate students. So, I mean, while I, I suppose you could look at it that way, the requirement is to have a threat assessment team, and the stated intent, next year, in 2023, is to have threat assessment teams to work with law enforcement to identify situations or circumstances where there is a threat to the school, to actively think as opposed to react to threats. Right? So we're not going to react, we're going to actively pursue and think about and work with law enforcement to identify possible threats to, um, each of our schools. So I guess it depends on your point of view. Many people are concerned about school security, and many people are concerned about safety, and so a threat assessment team would be assembled. The stated purpose is certainly to, to make sure that every student is safe, every staff member is safe, and if there are issues out there, things that we can share with law enforcement, that's when it happens. Okay? Mrs. Sisso? Did I say your name correctly? I did, okay, good. So I know that, um, I didn't get a chance to talk to you today. I don't talk about student matters in public, but I did, I did respond to you. And, um, but I think when Mr. Pauszuski comes back, it's appropriate to have a discussion, that the, some of the information that you shared is, um, is certainly compelling, and I'm sure that the, the district will certainly hear. But there's also a specific set of reasons why what you requested was denied. Okay? And so I don't think that...
The reasons I was given, the reasons that were given to me were stated here.
What's that? Yep, no, I know, I know. But there's, there's an option that was given too. And so...
I understand, but as explained, it doesn't fit the class you want to take. And I understand, I am in education...
Yep.
And I understand that at times, students need to make choices.
Yes.
My children know that they don't get everything they want.
Right.
But in this case, it is doable, with no expense to the district and no change to the schedule.
Okay.
So I don't understand why it's not being allowed.
Okay. So...
We will talk on that.
Yep. I'm trying to think of... So we have a process, um, and so, like I said, the lessons are there, they're available. Changes are possible. But what we need, and what's most helpful, is for anyone who finds information or things that you find objectionable, certainly share that information. For those of you who find any aspect of the lessons to be positive or appropriate, share that information as well. Okay? I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community that, um, also might be receptive to at least some of the lessons. What was, what else, anything else?
Um, I, I think for anyone who's navigating technical challenges, they should reach out. We have a technology department, it may be another device, a, a software.
Yeah, if there's anybody who, honestly, if there is anybody who's having like a, a technology issue, we just did a test on all the links, and we just did a test to make sure that all of our technology works. At least at this moment, it was working. Perhaps there was a glitch or something like that, but the fact is that information is available. It's out there, and, um, it's something that, if there is a problem, certainly give us a call. We can help you through, um, looking through the, the lessons that are there, and we'd be happy to, you know, share, share some, you know, other information if, if anyone's interested. All right? I think that's about it. What's that?
What about a parent form?
Um... Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's, that, those, that concludes my comments for tonight. What's that? Um, I, I think she made, um, she, she made comments that I certainly understood. I would have to look into the concern and find out more about it. I understand that you, um, you obviously, it has been addressed? Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tobat.
Okay.
Okay.
Interaction between emails that are going back into Let's Talk and the Board?
Okay.
I'm astonished that that isn't shared with the Board.
I'm, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of two-way conversation. Okay, could you please stay after and ask your question again? Sir, thank you. Okay. Old business? Yes, Mrs. Kamar.
I just have a question, because this was something that was discussed during Education Committee. The curriculum does have to be approved or adopted in September, right? Isn't that the statute? I, I just want to be clear what the statute is, that it has to be adopted by the end of September by the Board.
So the way, the lessons, when, when you look at, um, when they would actually be facilitated, it's not in September, so we have time.
Yeah, I just, I know that we have certain, like, requirements as to when the Board has to vote and adopt them. I just wanted to be sure on those words, that was kind of discussed. I just wasn't clear.
So it would be important, because there's also the opt-out process. So once the Board adopts lessons, then those lessons would be shared, those are the actual lessons. That's what the Board has adopted. And at that point, that's when people would have to opt out, if parents wanted to opt out. So that, that all takes time.
No, I understand, that's why I was asking the question about adopting and moving forward.
Old business? Comments from the Board? Okay, anybody? Nope? Oh.
Hello. First of all, I wanted to welcome the new employees to the district that will be beginning, uh, our new scholastic year. Uh, I guess I could say that on behalf of the Board and the Administration. I have to own up and say it was probably my fault about the August curriculum release. Uh, I did ask for the, uh, curriculum, uh, health ed curriculum to be released in August versus, um, you know, September, as previously was mentioned. So I, I thank the Administration for indulging me in, uh, having it produced by, by August. Secondly, uh, I'd like to say I'm proud of, uh, this Board and the Administration for the resolution, uh, about the exorbitant rate hike, uh, that they plan on doing for the, uh, school employee health benefit program. So, uh, I'm very proud that we're taking a stand against it. I also wanted to, um, to read a, a little item from the New Jersey School Boards Association, uh, from the April 2022 FAQ. And I want everyone to hear this. "The NJSBA and its Member Boards of Education Believe That Parents Are Most Important Partners in Education, And We Welcome Parental Input and Communication." In fact, state regulations require Boards to encourage feedback from the community, as per NJAC 6A 8-3.1. So I gave my feedback. I'd like everyone in the community to give their feedback. So this is your, um, this is your encouragement to, to provide the feedback via the Let's Talk curriculum. So I'm a little bit rattled, uh, from listening to that, uh, incest lesson plan that was in our high school. But, uh, you know, everyone have a good night.
Thank you. I just want to, uh, stress the fact how important it is for us to use the Let's, Let's Talk app. I don't think this is something that needs to rush to be done. I think it is important that we put our best foot forward, we keep the transparency going. If there's something positive that you see, be positive. If there's something negative that you see, please, please voice your concern as well. It was, it was nice, not that it was nice that people had to share personal experiences, but I want to thank the people that stood up at the microphone and were brave enough to share those experiences that they had in their own personal lives, to show how important it is with certain games and certain things, and the impact that it could have on our students. Uh, I would like, though, to thank our subject matter experts for putting forth the effort, effort to put something together. I did voice concerns. I also voiced things that I thought was good. I think as a community, we do need to come together, and we do need to do what's best for our students. And they, them, as well as our teachers, need to be our number-one priority come September, and when we implement this program. Thank you.
Mrs. Kazan?
First, I want to thank the teachers for the time and effort that went into compiling the new curriculum. I think they did an excellent job of listening to the desires of the community. There's nothing, uh, controversial. A lot of what was talked about over the past year, uh, never came to pass. There's nothing pornographic, or salacious, or, uh, a lot of what's been said has just been outright nonsense. Uh, the stuff that's in there now is, um, very low-key. I looked at every lesson, and you can too, the, the, the links will be online. There are no graphic materials, uh, there's nothing that shows any sort of sex act. I, none of that came to pass, and, and I'm glad we're finally at this culmination. The cross-the-line game, we've made clear, if, you know, if there are enough people in the community that don't like it, well, then it's gone. That's what this meeting is all about. This meeting is about having the conversation, as we promised. Now you get to weigh in. Uh, we're not voting on it this evening, it's not a done deal. However, there are mandatory portions of this curriculum that we don't have a say in. This is dictated by the State Board of Ed and the Department of Education. We've made this comment multiple times. It went back to the Education Committee. All of the legislators listened to you. They made attempts to move it back to the floor of the Assembly. It never made it. They decided, this is it. You're going to teach it, and you're going to like it. Or you can opt out. They've, uh, I called people I know that work at the Department of Ed. No opting in. It's not allowed under state statutes, sir. That's the simple answer. Uh, it's not about our lawyer's opinion. It's, it's about the law in general, and it's documented at the state level. And not only is it documented, they had a State Board of Education meeting only a week or two ago. Six hours long, they debated this topic yet again. And we were supposed to write a curriculum when people are all still talking about it? What, so we could rewrite it again? You know, they weren't giving us guidance, they weren't telling us if they were going to change it. This is, we finally reached a point where they all said, no, that's it, this is it, you're doing it. And it's due for the 2022, 2023 school year. So get it together. Um, we're, we wrote the curriculum ourselves. We could have bought a curriculum, but you probably would have hated it. Uh, so we, we took the time to have our education professionals write this curriculum and take into consideration the things you felt were the most sensational, and, and make them as milquetoast as possible. And I think they did a gosh-darn good job of it. The resolution, uh, yeah. The reason that's being brought tonight is because both sides of the aisle and everybody across the state agrees it's egregious, and we need to address it. There is beyond consensus for it. That wasn't the case with some other items. Uh, but there, it was addressed in other ways. So you, you, you got your time in the legislature for this situation, and it failed. That's it. It still has to be implemented. It's not our choice. We did not come up with this idea. We did not choose to this curriculum. It's not our decision. But it is our mandate. We take an oath of office, we must do it. Here is an article right here. "Will New Jersey Schools That Refuse To Teach The New Sex Education Standards Face Consequences?" And it goes down the laundry list of them. I'll give you a brief. "The state has responded by saying school districts that flout state standards will be penalized. Districts are required to implement the new learning standards by law." I'll, I'll get there. Well, if you want, if you want the shorter version, I won't read it to you. "They will use the State Board of Examiners, which will remove their certifications to even operate as employees in the state of New Jersey. They will remove the teaching certificate from any teacher that outwardly refuses to teach the..." Don't shake your head, sir. It's here, it's here. "The Commissioner of Education said so." Additionally, addition, it's my turn to talk! It's my turn, my turn to talk, and I'm stating facts. I'm not making this up. I'm stating facts. You, do you want to hear the facts? I'm stating facts. No, you have no evidence of that, sir. Middletown is not doing anything yet, because the school year hasn't even started, and trust me, they'll get a hand slap. The, the New Jersey revised statutes withholding of funds from districts is very clear. If you violate the state's standards, your monies can be withheld by the Superintendent of the Department of Ed and the Superintendent of the State Board of Education. So those are things I, I'm not willing to give up, quite frankly. Now, back to Mr. Esposito, who obviously, are we Facebook friends? I didn't know. But that's okay. You can read my comments. If I make them public, they're for everyone to see.
Excuse me, Mrs. Kazan?
Should I wait?
I don't understand. The discourtesy. I do not understand the discourtesy.
It's because she's condescending, saying that what we said is non...
No, excuse me. It's, it's her, it's her turn to talk.
I'm answering your questions, sir. No, I'm answering your questions.
At this point, if we could ask the public to please refrain and control yourself. You've had two opportunities this evening for public comment. You have an opportunity to come up after the meeting and discuss. At this point, this is the Board Comment section, and I would ask that you respect, give them the opportunity to finish their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Geppert. Mrs. Kazan?
Okay. Back to you, Mr. Esposito. Uh, I think you, uh, mistook the flavor of my comment, because when someone puts out an article that says, "Well, you know what's going to happen. People are going to vote 1, 2, 3." Well, you know what that does? That discourages voters. It discourages voter turnout, which affects the democratic process. And I, for one, happen to think the democratic process is important. I want people to look at... I want people to look at every person running in this race. I want them to make an informed decision. I don't want them to be lazy voters, go in there and press 1, 2, 3. Did I say don't vote for 1, 2, 3? No. Read my words and interpret them correctly, sir. That's not what I said. But you're entitled to your opinion and your comments. I'll take it. But I wanted to clarify that. Mr. Robertson, we cannot make a decision here in the moment about whether or not we're going to have a meeting at the chambers or the board offices because we have to find out if it's available. And if we do, then, you know, we may decide to change the meeting. No one's playing any games here. And Mr. Prossakos answered your question about why this ended up in August. Again, not to keep it out of the light of day, but, you know, we acquiesced and some board members wanted it sooner, rather than wait till September, which was our original goal, when everyone was back in school and we could be more forthcoming with the community that this was on the agenda. Is there an email that's going to go out with the attached curriculum? It'll be posted, but will they know that it's posted? I, I think, I, well, yeah, I think some sort of blast is required. I, I agree with, with that comment. Okay, his time is short, blah, blah, blah. I think there's a total of maybe nine lessons in that presentation. I'll let Dawn address that. It's very little to review at the end of the day. It took me no time at all. I don't think we need to drag this out for weeks and months and years. There's really not that much there that you need to review. And if you take the time to just sit at your computer for an hour, you will be done. This, this is ready to go. We'll listen to your, you know, concerns, obviously. Cross the line has probably already crossed the line. And that's fine, you know, we'll find some other way to convey the, the message that was meant for that particular part of the curriculum. And, and Mr. Faber, I think Cindy Simon answered your question, that we don't talk about animals having sex in second grade. Huh? No one said that. No one said, you know what, I'm going to address you, madam. You are correct. You found something in the AP Psychology class, which is a very niche group of students. It was probably not a good idea for that teacher. You took care of it.
It was the teacher.
Who do, who brought it up? Never mind.
The teacher had to administer the lesson, but it was not the teacher who came up with the example.
No, 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 no. Okay, I get what you're saying. But the point is, you reported it, you, you did it correctly and it was removed, was it not? Okay. That's exactly the type of thing that when it occurs and it was immediately taken care of. That's, how would I know that's in there? How would anyone know that's in there? I'm sorry?
You can't title that as nonsense that you just did.
What?
Concerns, this is real.
I'm not saying it's not real. I am agreeing with her, that it was, it should, I'm talking to her. Ma'am, I'm telling you that what you did was correct. You, you, you saw a problem, you addressed the problem, you took care of the problem. I have no way of knowing up here as a board member, everything that's, well, I'm asking her a question because I want to answer her question. Okay, we'll talk after the meeting. Clearly, so no one wants to let me speak. Let's see, define organs, talking about drugs. And I believe we, we have drug curriculum. But anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Any other comments from the board? Mrs. Kumar? I will ask Mr. Moffett to please check on the availability of the town council chambers for the September 8th meeting. Thank you. You're welcome. As far as the cross the line, I would like to thank members of the public who reached out to board members regarding that. There was a very strong reaction from the public. Fellow board members started to question the inclusion of that game or the, the form of that game in with the lesson plans. So that is being looked at by the administration. That's how we affect change. We've presented something, we already got feedback and we will take it under consideration and make changes. So I appreciate the fact that so many people reached out and had strong feelings regarding I want to congratulate the new employees that will be joining us this coming school year. I'm sure the school year will be a terrific one. It's going to get off to a really great start. And my email is very easy to find. It's right there on the website, sputup@wayneschools.com if you'd like to reach out to me, make comments. We will, especially if there are any technology glitches, if someone's having a problem accessing the lessons, just please let me know. Mrs. Reichman, Dr. Toback, and we will see if we can help you. I like the idea of the blast going out. Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming. Have a good evening and take care. See you next time.
Motion, motion accepted.
Thank you.